Good evening, West Orange, and welcome to our September 8th Conference Council Agenda. Madam Clerk, we kindly read the opening statement, please.
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building, West Orange, and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo?
Present.
Councilman Krokoviek?
Present.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Present.
Council President Guarino?
Present.
Mayor Perici?
Okay, good evening. Tonight, at the top of agenda, I'd like to move things around, I know, to ask Lisa to come up and talk about the Badlani Foundation Walk Run. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. I didn't mean you had to let me go that fast, but thank you. We have a meeting tonight. So, many of you may know about Nikhil Badlani. He was an 11-year-old boy who was killed four years ago when a woman failed to stop at a stop sign in the corner of Lenox in Wyoming. The family has started a foundation called the Nikhil Badlani Foundation in honor of Nikhil. And many of you have maybe attended or seen some of our PR and publicity, but if you're driving in town and you see the red reflectors on stop signs that say "Drive Smart, Save a Life," those are sponsored by the Nikhil Badlani Foundation. You'll see those in West Orange, South Orange, Maplewood. We have a lot of art projects that we've worked on, including a permanent fixture here at the West Orange Library that was created by the community. It's a traffic safety artwork. We recently created one at Maplewood Stock, and it's now a permanent fixture at DeHart Community Center, Maplewood. So, one of the missions that this foundation does is to promote traffic safety. It is one of the largest and greatest problems in our country, internationally, really, more so than even drinking and driving. Any distractions, the statistics on that will show you, it is far greater. So, we are trying to get our community to do more. But in addition, the money we raise at our upcoming 5K Run-Walk, it's a USTA-certified, so if you are a runner and you'd like to run and get timed, we'd love you to be there. It's a Sunday, September 20th, at West Orange High School. It's our fifth annual. At this walk, this is our greatest fundraiser, we raise a lot of money. That money goes back to not only promoting traffic safety within the surrounding town, but we provide the largest scholarships within the West Orange High School seniors. We also have put at least 59 students in free or reduced music lessons here in West Orange. But in order for us to continue to do this great work, we need the help of our community and so on and so forth. That means we need your help spreading a message to "Drive Smart, Save a Life," and to come out and support this important run. I would like to tell you that two exciting things that recently happened is, after several years with the help of John Keane, Myla Jassy, we have passed Nikhil's law. And this is a law that was signed by Lieutenant Governor recently, and when you go to the DMV and you go get your license, or you renew your license, you have an option to sign our safety pledge, which is basically saying, you know, "I will drive safely, I will pay attention to the roads, I will not text and drive," and so on and so forth. So, it was very exciting for the foundation. Further, if you see my thumb, it's painted red, and I can't take full credit for this, Johanna Osorio from the Police Department here in West Orange had brought this to my attention, and it's something I'm trying to have go viral on Facebook. So, if you've seen my post, I know some of you are my friends, can you please go repost this? I'm not saying you have to paint your thumb red, but you would all look beautiful, men included. And it is to remind you that when you are driving, you know, to stop on red for any distraction, right? To stop at the stop sign, to don't pick up that phone to answer a text, to do whatever you can, and it's just, you know, listen, we could be the next ALS Challenge. Let's be honest. If we tell our friends and so on and so forth, it is a national epidemic that we need to change. So, I'm asking you to come out and to help us raise awareness and just continue the support, and we appreciate, obviously, Mayor Perici has continued the council, the Board of Ed, they are our biggest supporters, Mr. Trent here, so, you know, we are very thankful. And that's it. Thank you for always hosting me and having me.
And when is the date and location?
So, again, it's Sunday, September 20th. I did say it this time. And it's at West Orange High School. And if you'd like to find us, our URL is stufffornikhil.org. I left some brochures, some information. I'll leave a poster. You can look at it. It's nice. This was actually created by a student. We did a campaign, and so, this t-shirt, you won't miss us. There'll be a C of Orange, but these are great for running, because they're great night, safe at night. But, um, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. And we should, all residents should participate. It's a great day, it's a great project to work on, it does great for our students, and, you know, prevent another tragedy from happening. Next up is a great organization, is our West Orange CERT organization. Captain, would you like to come up, please, and anyone else to represent? We thank you for the great work you do for the community, and we look forward to your presentation.
Okay. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Abdur Yessi, I'm Fire Captain with the Township Fire Department. I also serve on the, on the office, in the Office of Emergency Management. There, we run a volunteer program called West Orange CERT, which is the West Orange Community Emergency Response Team. This provides an opportunity for volunteers within the township to help us out, to help augment our resources, our uniform personnel, as well as to have you engage, because, you know, when our towns are faced with, you know, massive emergencies, everyone wants to help. And this is an opportunity to help, to have you here to help us and to have you integrate into what we do. So, in recognition of the month of September, excuse me, which is National Preparedness Month, we felt the need to present to you some information on how to be more involved via the CERT team, as well as, you know, again, recruit some more members and get this information out to the public. So, this is our CERT team here, this is some of our members here. They're no strangers to the Township Council, as you see. They're very dedicated, and I have to say, they're an extremely invaluable resource to our township. So, let's set the stage for CERT. West Orange is no stranger to large-scale incidents and disasters, whether it's snow in October, which dampens Halloween for us, Superstorm Sandy, which affected the entire state and actually the region, or, you know, in times of need when, you know, we're hosting large-scale events, whether it's 5Ks, like the one that was just mentioned, which hopefully will be a part of, as well as other township events. We do need volunteers, and we have a dedicated core of residents here that have helped us in the past and continue to do so. So, some of CERT's core responsibilities and roles are, again, lessening the impact of disasters. We think that it's very critical to have our members, you know, and as well as residents, as informed as possible on how to do that. And that actually comes through training. And we feel that the town is most effective in going through these events when they're informed and engaged. So, CERT started about 30 years ago. It was in Los Angeles. It was a concept that was, that was adopted by communities across the country. In Los Angeles, of course, we all know they deal with earthquakes, other communities deal with other local calamities and so on. So, it's a concept and a program that is adopted to the townships that it serves. So, what do CERT members do? Well, before an emergency, they help with the planning, mitigation, and preparedness. And that comes in the form of various activities. During an emergency, they help to augment our resources, because, you know, of course we have uniformed personnel at all times, but, you know, when you're talking about a township of more than 50,000 people, you know, all hands on deck, we need help. And that's where CERT comes in. And they also help with recovery efforts. So, some of our disasters that have faced this township are natural, of course, Superstorm Sandy, like I said, blizzards, snowstorms, nor'easters, and so on. Some things like technological, you know, if we have a massive brownout on a day like this, when we have, you know, above 90 temperatures, these things do affect the town on a large scale, as well as, you know, if cellphone towers went down, something like that. So, we can keep a chain of communication going. Then, of course, intentional, which are terrorism, that's something that's always, that we have to always be vigilant about. So, again, the program focuses on home and workplace preparedness. Again, you want to be able to take care of yourselves at home and have the training to do so, as well as take this information and training to your workplace. The hallmark of the program is the CERT basic training. It's a 24-hour program that incorporates these various modules here, including disaster preparedness, the CERT organization and how it's run, disaster psychology, light urban search and rescue, and so on. We highly stress everyone takes this program and get the training and tools. We also give out some equipment, so that, again, you can be further prepared and help us when we need you the most. And specific for our program, we have things like CPR that we teach, Incident Command, Incident Command System 100, so that you can work with seamlessly with the uniformed personnel, as well as emergency operations, shelter operations, I mean, emergency communications, excuse me, and rehab operations. And just some illustrations of some of the, some of the training, whether it's the fire extinguisher training and prop, rehab, water distribution. This was something that we had, actually, here in this township. We had some members go over to Tanggassen Street when they were stricken by a water main brick, that actually happened in another town, but it affected facilities downstream. So, if you want to join us and learn more, we're all over the place, whether it's on the web, via Facebook, Twitter, email, and of course, our main line, which is 325-973-3254175. And by all means, please join us, we really need to, we need you, you know. I think the program helps to instill a sense of calmness, you know. Again, everybody wants to do something, you know, when we hear that something's about to happen, we all rush to the supermarket or Home Depot to get generators and stuff like that, you know. But, you know, you also want to have some other invaluable tools that are out there, and we're here to provide them. So, again, thank you, Council President and the rest of the council and other officials. Our upcoming meetings are here. We usually have a meeting once a month. They're on Wednesdays, and our location is the Emergency Operations Center, located at 25, not pleasant place, on the second floor.
Thank you very much, Captain. Thank you to the CERT organization. Thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate your efforts. And residents should get involved. It's a great organization, you get to learn more about the town and what the town's made of, but it's a great bunch of individuals, residents, who really care. So, thank you, Captain.
Council President, before we conclude, I did want to take some time to publicly recognize some of our members.
Absolutely, absolutely.
They're a valuable resource to us, you know. Look, they're here during the times when our town are facing some major stuff. It packs their families, it packs lifestyles, time from work, and so on. And, you know, we wanted to take the time at the Office of Emergency Management to recognize our members that have been a part of the team for more than five years. And it's the least we can do, and, you know, again, we thank you so much. So, if I could have Bob Dryer, Rhoda Dryer, Jonathan Fox, Erica Carney, Vincent Mizili, Lorraine Mizili, Hedy Messenger, Herb Peitzer, Gaddy Ulyssy, and last but not least, our CERT Director, Ken Steele, if you can come up.
Come on up, gentlemen.
these volunteers. Their hours are innumerable when it comes to tough times and doing shelters and water distribution. We would not be able to meet the OEM mission in all the detail and with the fineness that we do without the CERT team. Thank you again.
Thank you, Chief.
Council President, if I could just, on behalf of the administration, Captain Abdur and Deputy Chief Wanamaker obviously outlined it in their brief presentation, but just to echo what they said, they've been a huge resource to this community. We were joking earlier that, you know, we haven't had a hurricane this fall yet.
Watch.
But there was a couple of years where, as the town got through those emergencies, they were a big part of how we got through those emergencies, whether it was the shelters that were set up, where they logged significant hours around the clock. We probably all see them, most community members see them, and nearly every one of the large-town events, CERT volunteers are there. So, it was nice that they were recognized tonight. I know we've recognized them in the past, but they give a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of their own individual passion for what they do on a regular basis to this community. And the Fire Department and, obviously, the administration are grateful.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. We concur with that, too. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Next up on our agenda is our Downtown Alliance, is Ms. Megan Brill.
I apologize for being late. I ran home to have dinner with my kids, and that was not a good idea. Okay. So, I have some things to hand out. If you could, Councilwoman Krokoviek, pass those around. There are two different guides. This is what the email from the museum was today. So, when the new superintendent came in the museum, he talked about a restaurant guide. Talked about there's 5,000 people that come through the museum, and they kind of walk out front, and they look around, and they don't know where to go to eat or have lunch or dinner, and he thought a restaurant guide would be a great idea. So, of course, it took us a little while to get it all together, and with the help of Prelinks, it's a publisher that just came downtown, we were able to put together these guides. One's a strictly restaurant guide, and the other one's the Shop with Orange guide. But you can see that in the restaurant guide, and I have 2,500 of them, so you all will have them, the restaurant guide has all the restaurants downtown broken out by ethnicity. What?
Yeah, tell them what was said.
The, oh, all right, so, because Joe kept all the ones I gave him. There you go. So, the plan is, in the next couple of months, that we were going to add restaurants from across town, but they're going to have to pay to get in the guide, just a little bit of money. I'm working with the Chamber of Commerce on how that'll all work out. But, it's a, it should fit right in your wallet, you can keep it with you. The second guide is the Shop with Orange guide. You'll see that that one has all the businesses that are in the Shop with Orange program, and the, yeah, I think Karen's dying for the Shop with Orange guide. The, what's also listed in there is the address, and then your tax credit, so when you shop there, it lists them there. So, we're very excited about that. We will be handing them out everywhere we go, and really want you to support the businesses downtown and the Shop with Orange program. The other thing that I'm here to talk about tonight is our Mayor's 5K Run to Break the Silence on Ovarian Cancer. And we're going to have members of the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition at our next meeting, but we're, you know, gearing up, and I wanted to tell you a couple of things that you may not know about ovarian cancer research and ovarian cancer itself. New Jersey's the ninth-largest state with ovarian, incidence of ovarian cancer, ninth-largest. There's no test to detect ovarian cancer. So, by the time you realize you have it, you're already in bad shape. So, a lot of the research that's being done now is to help figure out how we can test for it and hopefully eliminate it. The ribbon color is teal, and we have 30 different teams registered as of today, and the teams' names are kind of neat. We have Team Tres, which is Karen Carnivale's cousin, and I actually knew Tres, we all grew up with her, so that's definitely, you know, near and dear to us. But some of the other teams, I looked at the website, there's a "Teal Her, You Love Her," which is kind of cute, and there's also Team Ova, OVA, Team Ova. So, it's a great run, support, you know, the Mayor's Sunshine Fund and ovarian cancer. We're on target to raise what we raised last year, but of course, we want to do it bigger and better. The race is September 27th. We're in really good shape with volunteers, but we could really use, you know, more folks registering and running or walking. And you can pick up a registration form on our website, or you can call me, or Shari, in the Mayor's office, and we'll get you whatever you need to come down and walk, run, hang out with us. It starts at 7:00. At 10 o'clock, we also have the Kids Fun Run, which actually, the Mayor had brought up last year, that we don't have enough kids registering and hanging out for the Fun Run. So, we worked on a flyer today, and that's hitting the airwaves tomorrow. So, that's free. It's a mile run. They line up here, it's sponsored with the library, and so, we're excited about that. We have two new sponsors. One is this very neat company called Helamonics. It is actually a robot that is built, that, there's 10 different robots, so when you're diagnosed with ovarian cancer, they harvest a bit of the cancer from you, and they give it to these 10 different robots, and they give each one of the robots a different protocol. And they test the flesh with that robot, and they see where, which one of them responded the best. And then, that's the protocol that you get. Now, what happens is, the doctors say, "Well, we have these three different cocktails, pick one." And it's, "Well, how about the PhD on the wall? What does it tell me I should, you know, do?" So, we're really excited about that, and they're our new sponsor this year. The other, we have, the Bowls Arena is coming, and we have 102.7, the radio station is coming. So, it should be a really busy Sunday morning. So, come out and join us, ask questions, give us a call, we're here to answer anything that you may need.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Councilman, you have a question for Megan?
Thank you, Council President. Megan, Ms. Brill, if anyone, if we want to guide the public to where we can get these nice little guides, where do we tell them to go?
All the restaurants are getting them this week. The museum already has them, and actually, the email that we received from the superintendent said that he thought it was fabulous. I was nervous about them getting it, because it wasn't exactly what he had asked for. It was, you know, I guess, the Megan version of what I thought it would be need to put it in your wallet, be able to keep it in your glove compartment, and keep it around with you all the time. So, they're out, they'll be here at Town Hall, they'll be at the Farmers Market, which is every finance until the end of October. They'll be pretty much anywhere. If you need one, you can call Shari in the Mayor's office, call Downtown. I'll give you all some, you can hand out. I'll bring in some to Fan Fest, and wherever I go, they'll be there. But Victor, if you want some, and I see, you know, Rodolfo's here, and so, we'll pass them out, and we have 2,500 of each kind, so.
Thank you, Megan.
Is that it?
Council liaison presentations. I'd like to start tonight. We, most of you may have heard, have read in the Chronicle or watching, the Township of West Orange has even moved further what we're doing with our pedestrian safety. Due to the grant that we received from Partners in Health and the work from Charles Brown from Rutgers University Public Planning, we, we are, in October, we will have our, of course, our public meeting at West Orange High School, the Tornoff Cafeteria, at 7:30 on October 15th, and we hope all residents come to that to voice their opinions and see what we have to show you on the research that we've been doing. Also, within the course of the year, we will have, we will have 13 graduate students from the Blaustein School of Rutgers University, working here within West Orange, going through our complete streets, to redo our complete streets. This does not count, cost the Township of West Orange, anything, it's part of Rutgers University's partnership with us. It gives their students an education in public government, so it's really, really, these are great things that are occurring because of our, you know, the pedestrian safety ordinance and with the Pleasant Valley Way Traffic and Safety. So, these are really great things that are coming. And there's a letter that'll be going out that's from Councilwoman McCartney, Roz Belsky, and myself, inviting the public to come to the meeting to share their information with us, to listen to what the Rutgers study has come up with, and, you know, put your participation. You'll see things that are happening. And like I said last week at the meeting, you know, we started this less than a year ago, and look how far we've come. We've gotten so much accomplished, and we're looking forward to more. So, thank you. And also, please make sure you go to our Farmers Market, down to Quigley Parking Lot, it's great, and you'll get some great vegetables and items that you can purchase, have a good time. Councilwoman McCartney?
Okay, thank you. So, we have a planning board meeting tomorrow evening. On that agenda, we have the building across the street, the 59 Main Street is looking at making their driveway a little more pedestrian and traffic safety. We're looking at the Wiltshire Grand, doing some excavation work up there to level out part of their parking lot, and also the County of Essex, and I won't steal your thunder, to make improvements to the existing pony trail. That's tomorrow evening, September 9th, here in Town Hall, in Council Chambers. October 3rd, we have the Thomas Edison National Historical Park, our second annual Muckers Bowl. As you may know, that Thomas Edison called his researchers "muckers," and he required them to work through the night, and he fed them with local food. So, that's exactly what you will get if you attend, but not to work, but just to enjoy the music, and this is a flyer, they're all around town. Please sign up. It's 5:30 to 9 o'clock. It's right at the National Historic Park, under the tent. It's lots of fun. Day after, on October 4th, this will be our first annual West Orange Chamber and the West Orange PR Commission putting together a health fair. I had noticed that there were a lot of new chamber members in the health-related, in the health field, and thought it might be a good idea to put this fair together, an event together. This is on October 4th, from 1:00 to 4:00, at Liberty Middle School. It's free to attend, and just putting the blast out, we have over 40 exhibitors already. CERT team, thankfully, are, they will be part of it, recruiting the Fire Department, Police Department, of course, the Health Department, St. Barnabas, the Overlook Medical Center, chamber members. We have the Lions Club Mobile Eye Care Unit, we have, we're looking at the dental, the Colgate Dental Van. We have the New Jersey American Water Shop Right. There'll be a lot of... There'll be a lot of demonstrations, Tai Chi, Zumba, yoga, Lakeside Yoga. Now they're also doing their second event. Board of Education and Leader of Light. I am very excited about Leader of Light, you know, we worked over the summer, to integrate the solar building, uh, building circuitry for solar energy with students at the high school. West Orange, uh, the Director of the Sustainable Engineering Courses, uh, is writing the model curriculum that will hopefully be used through Leader of Light USA nationwide. So I'm very proud of that. Um, and what I would like, what we want to do at this health fair, these flyers are all around also, what we would like to do at the health fair is kick off a campaign that residents can also build these circuits so that we can make emergency kits, Leader of Light on their, yeah, Good Scouting Project. I'm looking at Eagle Scout Mom there shaking her head, Good Scouting Project. That the residents in town could build these circuits also. Part of the Board of Leader of Light is, are delegates from the UN and they would, of course, determine what country would best be suited. And here would be West Orange building the circuits that would use in some country that's been devastated by a storm. It's not, so, um, a lot going on. So we invite everyone, it's free to attend, uh, Sunday, October 4th, from one to four at Liberty Middle School.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. So that's Sunday, October 4th, the health fair. Okay, Saturday, October 3rd, we have the West Orange Charity Hockey Challenge. Mayor, are you playing this year? Come watch the mayor face against the, um, West Orange Fire Department. That's at Dakota Arena. What time? Uh, we don't have a time yet. It's in the evening, $10. Uh, and the proceeds go towards the Mountain Top League Hockey, the hockey program. For more information, go to the MTL Ice Hockey Facebook website. Uh, MTL Ice Hockey. That's October 3rd. West Orange Fire Department versus the West Orange All-Stars, spearheaded by Mayor Parisi. October 3rd.
All-Stars, that's very loosely stated. Or you're gonna see snow.
Very slow skating, All-Stars.
Yeah, I saw that picture from when we used to play football. That's an awesome picture.
Long time ago.
Yeah, well, I've, I've heard stories, so, heard it was a good, good player. The second announcement, Council President, I have here is the, um, we have the festival at Hazel Avenue School. Uh, there's a dunk tank, again, uh, that's on September 19th. Uh, and the proceeds go towards the, uh, the playground, uh, trying to raise money to, uh, install the rubber ground. Uh, names are being dunked. Again, Mayor Parisi, uh, spearheading the list here. Deputy Mayor Rodriguez, Rodolfo Rodriguez, I see him in the audience. Council President Guarino will be there. Susan, uh, Councilwoman Susan McCartney. Hazel Avenue, Hazel Principal Dr. Acevedo. Roosevelt Principal Lionel Hush. Uh, the West Orange High School Principal Hayden Moore. Uh, Tim Carter, West Orange PTA President. Uh, Phil Orphanidis, I see him in the audience. He's, uh, come dunk Phil. Uh, Susan Palmucci, uh, Coach Cicella, Cicella will be there. Uh, and, uh, and many more. So again, that's, uh, September 19th, uh, from 12 to 4:00 PM at the Hazel School Carnival. I'll see you guys there. I'll be doing my best to, uh, emcee the, the event along with, uh, with my friend Alex Duran.
We'll throw you in too.
Careful. Okay, so, uh, one more thing, Council President, we didn't have a meeting of the, uh, the Dagnin House. Uh, our next meeting is next Thursday. So I have more to report. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Krokoviek.
You may have noticed that I wasn't on that long list that Councilman Cirillo talked about. That's because they've actually paid me money not to be there because apparently every time I go into the tank, it splashes all the water out and they have to refill it. So I'll actually be in Philadelphia, all things considered. I just, uh, on a serious note, uh, coming up this Friday is the 14th anniversary of 9/11. And the county sponsors a commemoration of that event over at Eagle Rock Reservation at eight o'clock on the morning of, of 9/11. And it is, it is beautiful and moving and if you've never been over there, I highly recommend it. Those of you who have been there before know what a, uh, a wonderful experience it is that the remembrance is just wonderful. I just wanna invite people, uh, to come if you can. And just also wanted to remind people to try to speak into the microphones, both at the podium and here on the dais. Sometimes it's difficult for people to hear, uh, in the back of the, in the back of the room. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Okay, that ends our conference agenda. Madam Clerk, um, welcome everyone to our West Orange Town Council, September 8th council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you kindly read the opening statement?
This is to inform the general public that this meeting is being held in compliance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975. A notice of this meeting was mailed to the Star Ledger and the West Orange Chronicle on December 1st, 2014. A notice of this meeting was also posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building West Orange and filed in the office of the Municipal Clerk of the Township of West Orange on December 1st, 2014. Councilman Cirillo. Councilman Krokoviek. Councilwoman McCartney. Council President Guarino. Mayor Parisi. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The council is now in their public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, at this time, um, on this special occasion, on this time of a change for a person's lifestyle, you know, and going on to new and better things, I'd like to invite former Councilwoman Patricia Spango up to the podium to make some comments.
It's a little different to be on this side.
So speak into the microphone.
Yeah. Okay. For those of you that don't understand, I'm gonna try to do this without pulling a Jackie Sayers because it's known when Jack says something from his heart, he cries. So this is bittersweet for me, but I just have a few words I'd like to say to everyone. As many of you are aware, and for those that are not, I resign my position as Councilwoman for the Township of West Orange effective Friday, September 4th, 2015. It has been my pleasure serving the community for the past seven years as your Councilwoman, and prior to that, I served on the zoning board for seven years. I was first elected under the administration of John McCain and I would like to thank John for his love and commitment to West Orange. I was re-elected under the administration of Robert Parisi. I don't think there is anyone more devoted and committed to this township than our mayor, Robert Parisi. I would like to thank you, Rob, for all you do and it has truly been a pleasure to work alongside you. Jack, the best business administrator there is. I don't know how you keep up the pace administering Town Hall. During the seven years that I have served, you answered all of my calls, answered all of my questions. Don't start crying, Jack. And if you didn't have the answer, you went out of your way to find it. You truly are the glue that holds everything together. And I am sure that my colleagues will agree. If you have a question or concern, Jack is the go-to man. Thank you, Jack, for everything. John Gross, as only you and I know, I probably questioned you more than any one of my colleagues and doubted your reasons to take the position of CFO here in West Orange. You had big shoes to fill when Ed Coleman retired. I have to say, you not only filled those shoes, but you've made them even bigger. You've been my confidant, my friend, and I cherish the relationship that you and I have developed. Thank you, John. The Municipal Clerk's Office, I would like to thank Karen Carnival and her staff for all of their help and guidance throughout my tenure as a Councilwoman. Your office truly does a great job. Our Legal Department, I would like to thank Richard Trank and Ken Kaiser and their staff for always answering all of our questions and guiding us through the legalities of many issues. Thank you, Richard and Ken. Susan, the senior member of the council, when I was first elected, you welcomed me and embraced me. That was, I believe, the first time in the history of West Orange that we had two women sitting on the council. And only we both know how hard it is for a woman in politics. And yet you never felt threatened, but were warm and receiving to me. I thank you for that and thank you for your commitment to West Orange and for all the time you devote to this township. It has been a pleasure to serve with you. Victor, it has been a pleasure to sit alongside you and serve with you. Through the years, we have fed off of each other. I thank you for your commitment and dedication to West Orange. Joe, what can I say?
Maybe you shouldn't.
I have been known, I have been known as the colleague that has always questioned you and called you on your actions. That might very well be true, but Joe, with a little humor, I believe that no matter how many questions you ask and no matter how many answers you get, it will never be enough information. It is what it is. But all kidding aside, I do believe you always had the best interest of West Orange in your heart. Jerry, our council president, I saved you for last. What do I say? You and I have, I'm gonna break. You and I have developed such a close friendship. As a councilman and council president, you work so hard to serve all of the residents and all the hours of volunteer work you do within our township. It has been a pleasure to work alongside you and more than that, the friendship that we have developed will always be in my heart. My council colleagues, it has been an absolute pleasure working with all of you. We have had some contentious moments and have not always agreed, but I believe in my heart, we have always had one common thread, to accomplish and work towards what was best for the township of West Orange. I thank all of you for your combined efforts and your commitment to our town. Last but not least, I would like to thank the voters of West Orange for believing in me and electing me to serve as Councilwoman Large for two years. As I move on, I will always have West Orange in my heart. And again, thank you and my love to all of you.
Patty, we'd like you to stay at the podium. Uh, our wonderful mayor would like to make some comments. Mayor Parisi?
Patty, when, um, a long time ago, when I first got elected, a good friend, mutual friend of ours, John McCain, you mentioned our former mayor, said to me that if you're looking for praise, you shouldn't get involved in politics. None of us are here for the praise because we all know five well-intentioned people aren't always gonna agree. So we should never assume that the whole community is not, is gonna always agree. But that's never affected you. Uh, you've come to work as a council member each and every day with the best interest of this community at heart. And I was a little surprised, as a true, a lot of your colleagues were, uh, when this job developed for you, this exciting new opportunity happened very quickly. And, and we can't help but ever think of how exciting we are for you, but in the very next breath, uh, that how disappointing it is for us to not have you there. Uh, you've been a steady presence on the council for a long time and I think you've been in the unique position, um, as a small business owner, to know firsthand the struggles that West Orange taxpayers, West Orange business owners through the chamber, or like Meg Bro in the Downtown Lions, to know what it is to operate a business in this town, in this state, in this day and age. And that's gave you a unique perspective on the council and I think it's made you a better and a strong councilwoman. None of us are ever gonna agree 100% of the time, but I don't think there's any member of this community that can ever say that you haven't tried your best, given your best, and kept the township and this community, your community, uh, with the best interests in mind in every decision you made. Uh, from a personal perspective, Patty, um, don't know you all that long. You know, we met through the trials and tribulations of local politics and, um, uh, it was a pleasure to be elected with you on the council, uh, a number of years ago and to serve in the capacity, my capacity as mayor. You've been a, a voice on the council I knew I can always count on for an honest answer, whether it was the answer I wanted to hear or not, it was an honest answer and was someone that I could count on to, uh, help me get in the direction that we were looking to get to, uh, and to help me adjust to, uh, to sometimes the optical, obstacles that come up along that way. So I'm very excited for you. This is an exciting job. This is a job of great privilege, uh, and you should be excited about that and you should be proud, uh, that that governor's appointment, uh, thought enough of you to give you this opportunity. We're all proud that you'll be there. I suspect on election days, you and Karen are gonna spend a lot of time, uh, on the phone together. Um, that's good too, because, uh, uh, running elections in this town, in any town across the country require dedicated people, uh, committed to doing what's right and give the opportunities to the voters that they count on, uh, to voice their opinion. So we're sorry to see you go. I'm sorry to see you go, but I'm very excited for you and wish you and Mike the best in the future.
Thank you.
Time for me, now, Council. Patty, like we can say, what could I say? When I was first elected to the council, all our colleagues came and gave me, you know, a good education. But friendships are hard to come by and good friendships are always hard to come by, but they're easy to keep and I know we'll keep ours for many, many years to come. I do have to say that, that Patty, my wife knows Patty longer than I know Patty. So my wife, Robyn, her family, always went to Starlight Pizzeria or Fong's Garden. But, but other than that, Patty, um, it's been a great experience to work with you. I miss getting kicked under the dais when, you know, anytime I had to say something. Uh, but it's been a great experience. It's, uh, we're gonna continue talking. Uh, we'll learn from each other. I wish you great success in your job. It's a very important job, something that's very, very viable to the voting process. And I look forward to seeing you around town. You know, we'll always pop in the restaurant and, uh, we wish you great success. But last but not least, Patty, I'm behalf of your council colleagues, okay? The West Orange Township Council Certificate of Meritorious Service. The Township Council of the Township of West Orange is proud to honor Patty Spango on the occasion of retirement from the West Orange Township Council. Patty Spango devoted six years as Councilwoman to the community of West Orange and its residents, serving from July 1st, 2009 through September 4th, 2015. She served as Council President from July 1st, 2011 to June 30th, 2012. Throughout her time serving on the council, Patty also dedicated herself to her loving family, her mom Helen Minnie, her husband Mike, her children Jimmy and Dawn, Ralph and Tricia, and her two adorable grandchildren, Brooklyn and Madison. She is also the proud owner of Starlight Pizzeria, her family-owned business for over fifty years. The Township Council wishes to congratulate Patty in her new position as a Deputy Superintendent of Elections and does hereby express her sincere and profound appreciation and heartfelt wishes for good health and much happiness in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Madam Clerk, would you like to take care of the cake?
Sure. Make a wish.
Okay, make a wish. We do have cake here tonight in, in honor of former Councilwoman Spango. So he's good, good, go out on a sweet treat. We could take, we could take a five-minute break. Uh, we'll call a five-minute break right now so we can cut the cake and let our people here and our council colleagues enjoy some. Our best wishes to Patty. Uh, I, I know the residents of West Orange thank her and we all thank her and it's, uh, it's gonna be a difference and so, but we wish her well. Um, at this point in the meeting, before I open the meeting to public comment, I'd like the Law Department to, uh, make a statement or presentation concerning, uh, Patty Spango.
Thank you, Council President Richard Trank, uh, Township Attorney for the Township of West Orange. Obviously, we learned Friday and the Law Department adds everyone else's comments. Uh, Councilwoman Spango was unflappable and was as conscientious as anyone who I've seen over the last seventeen, eighteen years that I've been town attorney. So, uh, So, specifically, I was asked by a number of people, mostly the municipal clerk, to immediately advise as to what the process is to fill or not fill the open seat. And the bottom line is, the law is clear. Uh, you have 30 days from the date of the resignation to vote by a majority of the council to fill the seat. You have the option not to fill the seat. Uh, that obviously is your determination. So specifically, just so we're clear, uh, September 4th was the date of the resignation, 30 days would be October 4th. But October 4th is a Sunday, so I, uh, I strongly advise that if you are going to act, you act by the Friday before. Uh, you do have, you have one more council meeting, as I understand it, between now and then. You can have a special council meeting if you so choose, but your one council meeting remaining, uh, would be September 29th. Um, as to the process, the process is solely for your determination. As you know, this is not a partisan town, so it's not that you have to go to the, in a partisan town, you would go to either the Democratic or Republican Committee, they would give you a list of three, and then you'd have to choose one of the three. That is not the case in this town, because we're nonpartisan. So therefore, uh, you can do whatever process you want or no process. Uh, but again, you have to do it by October 2nd. You have to take that vote by October 2nd. Um, the seat you will fill, uh, under the statutes, and I conferred with county council today to see if their analysis is the same. Um, as you know, we moved our, what used to be May election, in 2011, the statute allowed us to move it to, uh, the general election in November. Bottom line is, since the resignation occurred after September 1st, the seat, if you choose to fill it, the term will go until after the November 2016 election and when those results are certified by the, uh, obviously, the county clerk. So that's the bottom line. The only thing I will add to that, because a couple of questions were raised based upon what we did maybe a number of years ago. Um, it seems to me that if you collect resumes, if that's the way you choose, they should all go through the municipal clerk, if that's the way you choose. Um, if you choose to do any type of process, meaning, I'll use the word interviewing, because some of us who've been around know that that was done, that, it, it is our, the legal department's position, you're gonna have to do that in public. So there will not be an ability for you as a committee of the whole. Uh, now, again, if you get resumes, I'm sure you're already getting lobbied, if you get resumes and you talk to people on the street, you can talk to anybody you want, nobody controls that. But if the four of you hypothetically wanna interview John Smith or, uh, or Savley Jones, that interviewing process would have to be out here in public. Um, so, again, I will answer any questions, but I think the process is pretty straightforward. You have 30 days, the clock is running, uh, and it includes Saturdays and Sundays. So it's not business days, it's calendar days. Uh, and, uh, you can choose to not fill it if you so desire. Uh, but if you choose to fill it, and there's a recent decision that came out of Hoboken and out of Newark that went to the appellate division, um, you, there was a whole thing, you probably read about it in, in last year, where, uh, councilpeople decided not to come to the meeting, so they couldn't get a quorum, so they'd abstain, all kinds of processes. No, you need three votes. If you go 2-2, hypothetically, two of you decide you want, one candidate, two of you decide one, then the mayor gets the vote. He casts then the deadlock. But that's the only circumstances under which the mayor will vote, is if there's a deadlock. Again, deadlock has to occur within 30 days. Excuse me. So other than that, it's pretty clear that is the law.
Richard, I have a question, councilman.
Yes, yes, councilman.
Thank you, Richard. Um, I guess the question, we already have received resumes, so we can forward them, make sure that the clerk gets them. But you said that if we choose not to fill the seat, what are the legal ramifications if we don't? Aren't there votes that will not?
Yes. Yes, you would risk that you could be in a position where on a bond ordinance or anything that requires a, a, a supermajority, that you may not be able, it would be considered defeat in that case.
Right.
Because you wouldn't get the, you wouldn't get the requisite vote you need.
Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, council president. Uh, Mr. Trank, you mentioned committee interviews need to be done in public, is that in statute?
Well, there's no committee.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I did use that word. I would, I said if all four of you are gonna talk, anytime more than two of you meet to deliberate or discuss any topic, it's just like, as you know, uh, Councilman Cirillo, you would require to do it in a public fashion.
Public fashion, public meeting.
So you'd need to either schedule a special meeting or do it before your, um, September 29th meeting. You can do that. That's totally up to you. It's just, I believe that in the past, maybe, some of those things have been done in a different fashion. I, I believe it's better error on the side of transparency, because I can't find it. It's not contractual negotiations, it's not legal, it's just you're interviewing somebody for a position. It's not really a personnel, it's to fill, obviously, a critical seat on this body. And, uh, I, I think the better way is to do it in public, if you choose. Again, that's up to you.
Yes, councilman.
My second question is, what would require a supermajority?
Bond, bond.
Bonds and anything else?
There are, there are a few other circumstances that, within the statute, there are far and few between, but the one that you see most often is the adoption of a bond ordinance.
Yep. Adoption of bond ordinance, if you ever wanted to try to override a veto. If, not, that happens too often, but if that.
But if you have, if you, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Trank, thank you. But if you have, Mr. Gross, if you have three to one, it still isn't a majority.
No.
No?
Well.
It was only four councilmen.
No, I think it's, I think.
No, it's of the whole.
I think it's of the whole, so I think you have to have four votes.
Okay. Just wanna clarify that to be. Okay, good. Yes, councilman.
I have one more, uh, question, uh, to you, council president. Do we have an answer yet as to what to do with all these emails that we got over the weekend, as in pertaining to, I, I know that councilman put an announcement of, what, what are we doing with that? I don't wanna disenfranchise anybody. I know that the issue was that, you know, it was premature to do that. Uh, we're discussing the process here, so.
But that's why we're doing it.
Are we gonna make an announcement today?
Right, we should make an announcement, but I think it should come from the public re, uh, information officer and not from a council person. You know, it should come from public information officer.
Again, I, I don't, my, my concern is to disenfranchise anybody out there that sent correspondence over the weekend, uh, and it may get lost. Uh, just, let's think about that before we proceed. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Anyone, anyone other, anyone?
Well, just to that point, I'm sorry, to that point, if it was sent to the council at West Orange, which I know we already have about 15 resumes already received, that I believe that the clerk has copied on those? Do you, or, you're not?
No, so we need to forward them to, to, or have the person who submitted it forward it to you.
That would be.
Not us.
But wouldn't the better way to be, when you announce it, give a deadline and say between this announcement and the deadline, everyone should submit to the municipal clerk?
So we don't have to make a decision tonight?
Well.
We have to make a decision, yes, we do.
We do.
You, you should strongly consider it, because, keep in mind, if you only have one, uh, since this is probably what everybody's attuned to, to see what the process is gonna be.
Correct.
Um, and since your next public meeting won't be to the 29th, it, it would make some sense. And obviously, be cognizant of that Monday and Tuesday are a holiday, so, uh, of next week, so if you're gonna collect resumes, I would strongly recommend you give people to at least next Wednesday to submit them to the municipal clerk.
Okay. Yes, councilman.
Yes, could you just explain perhaps to people in the audience, uh, supermajority and the difference between, uh, most of our votes and the requirements of supermajority?
Well, it could be.
In this instance?
Four. Four.
Right.
Four versus three. Yeah, three would be a supermajority, as you know.
Right.
Four would be a supermajority.
So there, when we've had five people on the council, uh, the supermajority was four to one. If we only have four.
It would create unanimous decision.
It would require unanimous decision.
Yes.
Right. Part of the whole.
And, I mean, I don't, I don't really wanna make a comment, but, um, there's an obvious reason why governing bodies generally have an odd number of people, so that you can have a majority and you have a supermajority. So you might consider that. And frankly, I don't know how you can avoid not making a decision tonight about how to proceed, because otherwise, without special meetings and notices and stuff, I don't know how you're gonna accomplish this.
But, by the way, uh, Mr. Kizer makes the other appropriate point. It's not just about the, uh, supermajority, it's about if, if a four of you deadlock. He's, he's absolutely dead on. You need to have a tiebreaker vote, and the only way you would have that is if you had five people on the council. You could have a simple thing, approving a contract. If you go 2-2, that's not an approval, whatever it might be. So that's why, forget the supermajority, you just wanna have a tiebreaker.
Council president, I would make a recommendation that we get the resumes to the clerk, have, uh, anyone out there that has submitted a resume, to send it to the clerk at West Orange. Um, and I, I can't see doing it the day of our next meeting. I see, I can see scheduling, uh, interviews, if we're gonna call interviews, scheduling interviews out over a couple of days, since already we have 15, we can't do that. And, uh, just before.
Well, councilwoman, councilwoman McCarthy, you remember last time you all looked at the resumes, uh, meaning the members of the council, I mean, you were partly part of it, and you, you, you culled it down somewhat. I believe you did not interview, at least at the mayor's recollection, is there were about 15 resumes submitted, and you interviewed six or seven. So you could.
Oh, years ago. Right, there were 18, yes, you're right, there were.
You could hypothetically, you have four members, you could hypothetically say, okay, let's all agree that of the, whatever, we get 50 of them, we'll each pick two that we want in, and if there's duplicates, then we'll, we'll interview less, because that means we probably are starting to call less around a candidate. And then that way, by that process, you'll get a sense. It could be, you could end up interviewing a maximum, I'm just picking two, because that two times four is eight, and that seems like a reasonable number to interview, if that's the way you choose. And then you, you'll have eight people and that you'll bring in. If two of you, quote, select the same person, well, then that is less, but that's probably a good thing, because it means there's a preliminary consensus.
Right.
So, but that's just, it can be any process you want or no process. So it's not mandated. You do whatever process the four of you are comfortable with, but I do agree with Mr. Kizer, deciding tonight, uh, is of some benefit, because you get the word out immediately. And then Ms. Carnifil and, and the law department and the PR department can work on getting out of the website, of the official website of the town immediately, and getting it out there to the other modes of communication.
Hypothetically, Mr. Trank, if the council and consensus looks at all the resumes and they'll find some they feel, is, you know, and, and can they just go?
Yes.
Pick somebody else?
Yes.
Okay, so it doesn't lock us in just to a resident who submitted their resumes?
Yes. And again, we always end up with this question, so we might as well get, there's no requirement that it be a caretaker or someone who may or may not decide to run, that does not enter into any of the analysis. It may enter into how one of you votes or not, but that's your decision. It's not, that's not required by any statute or other situation.
Thank you, Mr. Trank. Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Krovia.
Just a quick question, actually, a couple of questions. How does the current makeup of the council, of four members, how is that affecting, uh, working with the Public Meetings Act? And the reason I ask is because can we have two people interviewing a candidate, two councilpeople interviewing a candidate and not violate that outside of the meeting?
Yes, you could do that.
Okay.
You could do that. Anytime there's a majority, which would be three, it's still three, it was three before, it's still three, then you'd have to do it in public, and you'd have to notice that process. So going back to the way councilwoman McCarthy was trying to suggest, and maybe we'd have to do it over a couple of nights, you'd have to direct the municipal clerk to immediately notice those meetings. But, but councilman's concept hypothetically of we do it in pairs or we don't do it in a formal manner, we just do it on our own, you can call everyone who submits a resume and interview them yourself on the phone, or whatever way you want. You, just like I'm sure people are running up to all of you all the time, and that's perfectly your choice.
I think the point I was making was that I don't want to do the interviews the night of the council meeting. I'd rather, you know, you're saying September 29th is our council meeting, I don't want to have eight interviews and then make that decision. I would like to schedule a date, you would have to tell us the deadline, um, right? There's a certain time that you have to have it published?
Uh, these are more or less.
Forty-eight hours, okay.
Emergency, so it's, I, there's no requirement that we advertise it. I just, obviously, I'm checking just to, what's the, is the 22nd the Yom Kippur? Is that, I should know this by heart. I have my tickets at home, I don't think I'm not going.
The 23rd.
23rd. So that means the 22nd, though, is extremely observant night. So I would not schedule a council meeting for the 22nd, just like you wouldn't do it for next Monday or Tuesday, because that's the original.
Mr. Trank, I have a quick question to go to Councilman Krovia's point. If the council wanted to appoint two members as a committee to do the interviews, they could do that, and then that committee would then submit the final four or five to the full council for approval?
But, but the council president's point is still correct. He, the full council could choose to ignore all those.
No, I understand that.
So the problem with that suggestion, other than to facilitate interviews, is every one of the four councilpeople has an equal vote. So if hypothetically, the two people under your hypothetical only chose these three people to present, um, the, the, the other two councilpeople would say, we don't like those three, we like the other ones. So, so you, you, sometimes the best process may be get all the resumes, why don't you all look at them, and then if somebody believes there should be a public process, then immediately get to, maybe we, you pick a tentative date, but again, it's gonna be very tough with the calendar. Uh, but I, I think the practicality is you're under the gun and you're gonna have to do the process based upon the knowledge you have of the individuals who submit, their involvement in town, and your own personal impressions. And any questions, you ask them. Uh, but again, you get into the culling process, which I think is difficult.
And, and council president, I, I mean, I'm struggling to remember, um, how this happened the last time, and ironically, I actually participated in the process. I was interviewed by the then-council when Pat Schorzer was, was nominated and eventually got the job. And I think that the council as a body did get all the resumes and did narrow them down amongst themselves. That's my best recollection. I wish I had a more specific recollection, I don't, but I think that's what happened. And it got down to maybe seven, five, six, seven people that were ultimately formally interviewed. Um, I don't remember how many resumes were submitted altogether, but I think the council as a, each councilman had the opportunity to read resumes, and they sort of, you know, could figure out after, you know, which ones were worth interviewing and which ones were not.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kizer.
Yes, sir. Could, could I ask how we did it, uh, I guess, five years ago? Because as I recall, when, 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 uh, Councilman Parisi became Mayor Parisi, his seat opened up. And I recall there were four candidates at that point, because I actually did an Oprah to find out who, who had applied. Councilman Cirillo, were you on it? Were you on it at the time?
No, he had, uh, Councilman Cirillo had one election at the time.
But weren't you on the council at the time?
I don't recall.
No.
When, uh, uh, Councilman Webster was appointed?
I think he was appointed when I didn't have voting authority yet. I hadn't been sworn in, I, because I don't recall voting on that.
Well, certainly, uh, as.
Yeah, I do.
As Councilwoman Spango pointed out, the senior member of the council.
Yes.
Do you recall what the process was there?
I remember 23 resumes, we eliminated five, we got them down to 18, and then, but I feel like that was Kevin Keel, that was even, right? I think that's what I'm thinking about, that's.
You're thinking about.
Exactly.
Yeah, earlier.
That's when, that's when Councilman Cirillo was elected, and then.
But you're not remembering, because.
I don't remember it as an interview process.
Yeah, I, I don't remember it.
Yeah, I don't think it was a mandatory process.
But I think the bottom line is, you should pick, based upon the calendar, what you're most comfortable with.
Well, it sounds like we're going with an interview process.
Here's one idea. So hypothetically, look in the calendar, it looks like the 23rd to the 24th are probably the only potential dates if you wanted to do a public meeting before the 29th, and I don't know what that conflicts with or whatnot. So if hypothetically, the resumes were due to Ms. Carnifil by next Wednesday, the 16th, then that would, you could.
Excuse me.
I'm not here, if it's your word. Um, you could, um, distribute those resumes, and, uh, then if the council chose to do something more public, uh, so you could schedule the meeting for the 23rd or 24th, depending on when all four councilpeople are present, you can always cancel a meeting. And then you circulate the resumes next Wednesday night, that gives you all, um, till Friday or Monday to decide what you, whether you wanna do a public process or whether you just know the candidates well enough that you're gonna do it whatever way, other way, other way, less formal way. And then, again, it just seems to me, you've got to decide on the 29th. You know, any other process will greatly risk that statutory deadline.
Any other questions for the town attorney?
Just another one. Five years ago, we, the council appointed an interim, and then they had a special election. How is the election to fill the, this seat going to work? Is it a special, is it general?
No, it's going to be in the general next November. That person, though, will take office before the other people who are elected, who won't take office until January 1. So they'll get, though, I don't know who it'll be, but that person will hypothetically get a five or six-week longer term.
Because they'll be appointed at the conclusion of the election in November-
Correct.
And not wait till January 1st?
January 1st.
And why isn't there a special election this November?
Because we can't, because the councilwoman resigned after September 1st, where the statutes say, if it's before September 1, then, and that's what I conferred with county council with, the problem you have are multitude of issues, besides the statute, which says the September 1 deadline. You have the problem, and Ms. K, I'm sorry, Ms. Carnival actually pulled it, and the county clerk confirmed, petitions were actually due sixty-four days before the election. So we're already past the sixty-four days. So keep in mind, if you decided today, we want to run it in the election in November, besides the fact that the county has told me, and confirmed with the new county council, that her review of the law is similar to ours, that Ms. Carnival hasn't put the petitions out. She has to put the petitions out, she has to then get them back, she then has to review them, she then has to certify the petition, signatures are all registered voters, as everyone knows. Then they have to pull the ballot positions, then they have to print the ballots, and then, don't forget, military ballots and vote by mail, which as you know, is a growing segment of the population, are required by statute to be out forty-five days before the November 3 election, which Mr. Durkin told me is September 18th, which is ten days from today, right? Today's the eighth, ten days from today. So the physicality does not allow it to be on this November. So the statute, again, there's a couple of statutes, but clearly the statute that deals with general elections says that if the resignation is after September 1, that the seat is filled until the next election. So that's kind of where we're at. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trank.
Thank you, Mr. Trank.
This is a good question of Madam Clerk. I could swear that you are a recipient of any email to council@westorange.org. Has that changed, or have I just been operating under the-
No, I get them.
Wrong, oh, you do?
Yeah, I get them.
Oh, that was my question, that it, so you have a copy of West Mason?
I've gotten one resume through that email. That's all I've received as of today.
The rest were just requests?
Individual.
Individual requests, and-
They must have gone to somewhere else, they did not go to me, or to, they go to Clerk, and they go to Kay Carnival. I don't get counsel. If it goes to council@westorange.org, I don't see that.
Did you use two?
No.
And that's my point, Council President, we need to make sure that, we make an announcement that anybody that submitted resumes over the weekend to resubmit to the clerk-
Right.
We can set up a specific email.
Or a specific email, correct.
A specific email that was just for this purpose.
In order to not disenfranchise anybody that submitted over the weekend.
You're right, Councilman, we should, we need to tell the general public where to submit their resumes to, and it should be to the township clerk.
I do get that, but I've only gotten one resume, I don't know. I've had issues with my email in my office, though, so I don't know if there's something going on, there's been a, in the last couple of weeks. But as of today, I only got one resume, through that.
We have the IT czar right next to you, we should grill him on that.
Mauricio's been involved with it, so we already have him involved, but I thought it was resolved.
So just to be clear going forward, when somebody sends to council@westorange.org-
I do, I am supposed to see it.
You're supposed to see it, okay.
But you have.
But we will have the notification, we will actually put your email address to send it directly to you as clerk.
Okay.
And that way, there's no-
Right.
Thank you.
And then I have to distribute it to the council.
Right, then you distribute it to the council.
Going to the other is a forward, and to the extent that, you know, there's some issue with that, I don't want to get caught up in that, even if it is resolved.
To avoid the whole problem, just hand-deliver your resume to the clerk's office.
There you go.
Very simple.
Then we're going back, then-
Right here in the town hall.
Just hand-deliver it to the clerk's office.
I think we need to pick a date, the 23rd or the 24th?
24th works for me.
That's Thursday.
So you're going to do a meeting on the 24th?
That's true.
And are you going to make September 16th deadline to turn in resumes?
The week before.
Okay, 24th?
Close of business, or midnight?
Well, that would be the 16th deadline.
Right, but we need to set it, do you want it to be close of business on the 16th, or midnight? Because emails-
The close of business, the close of business on the 16th.
All right, so that's 4:30, what I'm going to say, 4:30, it needs to be marked, 4:30 on the 16th.
All right, timestamp for your email.
Right. And then on the 17th, how's it relate to the council?
Yes, ma'am. And then we'll have our meeting on the 24th. I'm sorry, 7:30.
7:30?
Yes.
You should probably schedule for seven, just in case you decide to interview all or more.
Okay, then we can set it. Okay.
There are only ten or fifteen minutes, you're scheduled, but you have.
I'm sorry?
People are used to that, 7:00.
Fine.
Could I also suggest, just preparing for a potential emergency, that we set up a meeting closer to the October 4 deadline? If we can't get it done at the 24th-
September 29th is your next meeting.
Right, if we can't get it done on the 24th or the 29th, maybe we should just notice a meeting after that, just in case we need it. And that way, we can just kill a couple of birds with one stone.
You can do that, certainly you can do that on the 24th, after 24th, if you think you don't get through it, even the 29th, you can do it as an emergency, if you need to.
But what about the holidays? I know that there are holidays involved in that.
Yeah, the holidays are the 22nd and the, to the 23rd, yeah.
Yeah, it's important.
Yeah.
Do you guys want to set up an extra time?
Set an extra date.
Might as well just do it now, just simplify things, and then we can always cancel it. I'm just thinking it's less work for the Madam Clerk.
It doesn't leave you that much time. It's, the next day would be Friday, and then the next one is Monday, the 28th.
I do not recommend you go to the last day, which I consider to be the second. So if you are concerned that you've done the meeting date, then I guess I prefer it to be the Thursday of that same week. You should, it's got to be a way to wrap it up.
Oh, I was still in September. I was saying with the 25th, September 25th, or September 28th.
28th is Monday, okay.
Right. Not to go into October.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because then we don't have a meeting, right.
If you go on the 29th, we'll have your vote.
Right. Monday, the 28th.
So do the 24th and the 28th?
The 28th is tentative, just like we do our budget here, and if, you know, if we don't finish, at least we have a date.
28th is just, yeah.
Then we go to the 28th. Because that fits my calendar.
At seven.
And this will be put on the township website?
We'll put it on the, you probably want to announce it in total now, that everybody hears that.
Absolutely.
Perfect.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, what do we-
So the deadline to submit resumes are, is going to be 4:30 PM on September 16th. They can bring them in by hand to my office, room 101, at Town Hall, or email to clerk@westorange.org. The meeting, the first meeting will be scheduled September 24th at 7:00 PM, for the purpose of interviewing candidates, with a tentative date of September 28th at 7:00 PM. And hopefully, at that point, you'll make a decision and vote on it on September 29th, at the next scheduled council meeting.
And as Council President, you point out, that just because this resume you submit or not submitted, does not limit the council's decision-making process.
Correct.
Correct.
So maybe the next item is, how to get this word out just as quickly as possible? Get it up on the website?
Everywhere, Facebook.
Yes.
All right. And I'm sure the town, the public information officer will put it out there as well.
Most of the resumes received are here in this room, so you all heard the message.
They all heard it, right from the horseback.
Resend it.
Okay, resend.
But it's a very limited number of people that probably know about this, because there hasn't been any news coverage.
Right, that's why it'll go out in the town on-
The announcement will be made.
So here's my suggestion, if we've gotten ten with very limited news coverage, that we should anticipate that maybe there's going to be even more. My suggestion would be, not only to ask for a resume, but to also ask perhaps some specific questions to answer on a first round, because we may not be able, if it's 20 people, we may not be able to interview all of them.
From what I understand, is you're going to not interview every single person that sends a resume, you're going to-
Cut it down.
Right.
Right.
That's a good question. You're going to use Mr. Trank's suggestion, where every councilperson picks out two, and then you'd end up with eight, potentially eight, right?
Should request a cover letter, John. I think a cover letter would be nice, you know, along with a resume.
That gives you the background and all that.
And maybe we ask a couple of questions, like, why do you want to be on the council, and what would be your priorities? And maybe the third question is, would you serve under a restriction that you wouldn't run for real, wouldn't run for election at the end of the term?
Why would that be necessary?
That's not necessary.
It's good information to know. I know there's been one, one application submitted by Mr. Paranilla, who said specifically that he would not run for election.
Because, you know, that research could never be bought.
Yeah, it's a democratic right.
Ask whatever you want.
Sure.
I would not get into that.
Yeah, please.
That's just not being transparent at all.
If you ask for a couple, individuals will put in there what they think is-
Right, when you're applying for a job, you say all the things, why you should have the job.
Right, and that, that in and of itself, it might be information, too.
Yeah, exactly. Why do you want to be on the council, and what are your, what would be your priorities?
Let me, let me ask a question, too. Do potential people submitting resumes, do they have to submit, you know, state clearance that they are eligible to hold the position of a councilperson?
It's a good thing that you put it on the record, because Ms. Carnival will have to do that check, but, so you may want, Ms. Carnival may want to explain that requirement right now on the record, and put it on the website.
Yeah, we do have a, there is a criminal background check that is done for every candidate that, you know, submits petitions in an election. So is it a good idea to, if they submit a resume, to have a background check?
They're not going to be able to accomplish that between now.
Right.
Again, everyone who submits, especially if you put it in your notice that they will be required, is going to be assumed to qualify and to meet that requirement.
So that should be put in the notice?
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Now, again, if the council is going to go through some kind of calling process, it seems, for us to run 20 background checks on people between now, besides the cost and enormity of that-
The candidate pays for it themselves.
The results wouldn't be bad, yeah.
Yeah, but just getting it done.
No, I know.
But then if the person that's selected, if it has a criminal background, what do you do?
We could have a problem.
They can't serve, there's a requirement, they require them, you can't serve.
But, but, Council President, you're right, if we, if you were to choose X, Y, Z person, and God forbid they didn't clear it, then you would not have the other seat, and you would not get another tentative. So I don't know what else to say, other than, the only way to assure yourself is to run the process now on everyone, which seems, I don't know you-
Well, if you had, if they're required to do it themselves, and pay for it themselves, a clerk has said it's about two weeks, if they get it in right away, it might be in about 29.
Well, they should admit it, they should submit it the day they submit their resumes.
So if you're going to do that process, and people come down and doterize it, and it's going to be done in front of you and pay you for that, how much is it?
They send it in, $18.
Okay, so I guess that's the bottom line, if people are serious and they want to, to avoid that issue, you could do that process.
It's just a question, it's just-
Yeah, it's a good question.
It's a good question. Or if we want to narrow it down to a smaller list, let's say we get 25, and we narrow it down to 10 or 12, and then, you don't have time to do that?
So they're serious about running, like, just when we were, we had to submit that.
If it takes two weeks, could take to the 30th, you know, just, you know.
So I'd like it that then when they submit their resumes, then everything they should submit for the background check.
They just submit it to me.
Do you?
Yes.
So you open it all that?
Yes.
Well, that's good, then you know, you got the resume, you got everything at once, and then you-
And I believe they need a money order.
Well, in that case, then-
Well, that's why next Wednesday's got to be a hard day.
Well, I was going to say, if that's the case, then you really have to apply in person.
Yes.
You have to come down in person, not through the internet.
Yes.
Fine.
You can't, you'd have to come down and-
Yeah, because you need that form.
Because you need to be able to pay for that, and get that going. So that, 16th might be the deadline.
It is the deadline.
But the earlier the better.
Right. Okay.
Good, good clarification.
Madam Clerk, do you remember if we ran criminal background checks back in 2010?
Every time.
Every time.
Everyone who submits their petitions has to have that done. It's a blue form.
Interesting.
Yep. Okay, so we're set, so we're set on what we're going to do, on what, we're going to tell the general public, the procedure, the process, the deadlines, and what they need to submit.
So what is our process? I understand the process to get the applications, how are we going, the four of us, going to narrow this down, or how are we going to handle it?
Well, we have to meet in public. I mean, like, you can't, you know, you look at the resumes, and we come to our meeting on the 24th, right?
Right.
And then we have this, then there. That's, we can then cut it back at that time, because it has to be in the public, we can't do it. Am I right, Mr. Trank?
Right, as a group, we can't, but if I wanted to call somebody, or if two of us, as I mentioned, if two of us wanted to get on a call and talk to a candidate, if we had interest, that would be allowable, wouldn't it?
That's fine, if he does it on his own, right?
It's on your own, it's not a public process.
Right, close it on morning, 3:00.
And it can be morning, too. But hypothetically, I think maybe you wait to see how many people you bring in on the 24th, because it's going to be driven by numbers, and then you could say, you get one minute to give an introduction, and then if any councilperson asks questions, they can ask it. But again, that process will not involve the public, there'll just be you interviewing in public.
I think you might want to make a decision tonight, like, for instance, if each of you are going to pick two, make that decision tonight, because we're going to have to put together a process to deal with that, so you get, you get that back to us by Monday, so that you can then let the people that are going to be interviewed know, because you, they have to give them some notice. So, you know, I think that council's, the suggestion of, you know, two per councilperson is really a pretty good idea, because then, like I said, you're going to be interviewing, 78 people, only those people are coming in.
Yeah, it becomes a finite process, as opposed to, you have 50 resumes, and then you're sitting here saying, we bring in different people.
Absolutely.
The night of the meeting, thinking-
All right, so you're saying we have the, before the 24th, we have to say-
Karen will have all of the resumes by the 16th, so as soon as Karen gets the resumes,
then she will share them with us, and we go through them.
We'll scan them, we'll send them out to you, we'll set them up, so you can look at them. And then by Monday, each councilperson provides two, and we'll provide two for interviews, and we'll put that in the notification, you know, tomorrow, that, you know, they will hear back by Monday, whether they-
21st.
21st.
21st, whether they'll be scheduled for an interview on the 20th.
So they would need, so I would need to know prior to that.
So you will find out on the 21st, from all four councilpeople, there will be eight finalists, you'll then schedule in 10 or 15 minutes increments for the 24th, and then you'll get through it all.
Counsel, if you submit it by noon Monday, that would give you the rest of the day to notify.
Right.
All right, okay, that's going to be the process.
So here's a quick question. Let's say we get 25 or 30 resumes. It may be hard to narrow it down to just two, two of each of us. It may also be a situation where we pick the same people.
Right.
Right, maybe, maybe all four of us like the same person, and that-
That's a great, then you've already narrowed it down.
It's a good thing, then it narrows it over.
Well, I'm just wondering if that's, if that's inclusive enough. Maybe we all pick three, and we take the top eight.
How would you do that?
How do you do eight?
Well-
What if you have all three, all four get four?
Right, well, the top eight and, or small, is what I'm thinking.
How about if somebody doesn't pick anybody?
LSAT exam.
And how about if someone one of the councilpeople decides not to pick anybody?
You don't have to, you don't?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But you go to, I guess, if that solves the eight, or if you each pick three, hypothetically, on your foot, and you max you have twelve, and then hopefully you'll have to do, so it'll be ten or less.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering if we get to a situation where there's only, that everybody likes the same candidates, and we only got two or three, is that being inclusive enough? Does that give enough people a shot?
It's the same thing.
Because you're picking the person.
Right.
Then you've already narrowed it down.
A supermajority. There's your supermajority.
So do you want to, do you want to pick two each or three each?
Three.
Three.
Okay, we'll pick three each.
Or none.
And hope, or none. Yeah, three or less.
Up to three, that's good.
Up to three. Very good.
And then Ms. Carnivale will know by Monday, hopefully noon, and then she'll slot in whatever time slot is available, and hopefully you get, you go, hypothetically, you should be able to get that one.
Yeah, if you limit it to 15 minutes per, that's.
Because then you're going to be able to power it.
Good. Can I also suggest that the cover letter be one page or less?
We have a lot of information, we're doing the best we can. Oh, you mean from that, oh, from that?
Yes.
Oh, the candidate, right, yeah.
I'm thinking the PIO puts out a news release tomorrow and lays out the process and says, when you apply, include your resume, and in your cover letter, say why you, I don't know what, if we want to discuss the question, say why you want to be on the council and what your priorities would be.
I don't want, I don't want us to be in a position to make a decision of what to ask. I think if we can provide a cover letter, candidates themselves will determine what they think is important to say.
Limit your cover letter to one page.
Just limit your cover letter to one page.
Right. Let them, just like when we go for a job, just same thing. Okay, so we have the process now, the procedure, the timelines and everything, and it will be on the website?
I want to know if Susan Anderson is listening as well. Okay.
Okay. Okay. Now, next.
Now, let's hear what the public thinks about that.
Well, we'll see in a little bit. Next, I'd like to call up Deputy Mayor Rodolfo Rodriguez. He'd like to make a presentation announcement. Welcome Deputy Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. Rodolfo Rodriguez, 22 Ashwood Terrace. And this is Amalia.
Morales.
Morales. We represent the Hispanic Foundation of West Orange, and that's why we're here tonight. The Hispanic Foundation, for those who don't know what it is, we decided to create, to join, to unite our Hispanic community. You know, most of our Hispanic community is come right at the bottom of the hill. Everyone knows that. Most of the businesses as well. So we decided to create this foundation for the community, to work with the community, work with the Hispanic community mostly, on different topics like education, health, orientation, immigration as well, how to basically behave, do things, you know, when you come from a foreign country. Most of the time, you bring your country. And we want them to adapt to what the United States is and what America is all about. So as soon as we created our foundation, we invited different groups in town. And to start with, we invited, we have a teacher right here, she's a teacher from Washington School. Then also, we started a foundation with our only Hispanic councilman, Victor Cirillo, who's one of, one of our members. We have a business owner who's not here tonight. Then we also have an IT person. The other person is an accountant, and myself, also Father Miguel. We have a father in the group, priest. So this whole foundation started, and it's been very successful. We started working with the business owners in the area, trying to get the community to know who they are, and them to know their community in the area. Well, we had our first Latin night on August 1st. That was really a success. Laura Lab from the Board of Ed, plus the Hispanic Foundation, we did it together. And let me tell you, we had more than 400 people there. A lot of people from the community. We tried to get business owners involved, and they did. I was talking to one of the businesses from the downtown area, and she told me she ran out of food three times selling the event that we had. It was wonderful. I mean, they get to make money as well. Well, after that, we started working with the Hispanic Foundation inauguration party. So this happened this past Saturday. We want to thank for the support on this party, Mayor Parisi, who's been very supportive. We invited, well, basically, I tried to invite everybody. I didn't have everybody email. I sent an email to the town council president. I know everybody was away for the weekend. It was a holiday weekend. But we counted with the support. Jerry Guarino was there. Victor, obviously, because he's part of the foundation, he was there. And we also had Laura Lab, who had been very helpful to us. Sandra Morikai was there, helping us. We also had a principal from Hesu School. He was there, helping us, supporting us. And we are quite a few people, very important people from town, business owners. I guess we, I think we had probably more than 25 businesses supporting this party Saturday. Some of them were there, some of them just gave us donation for the party. And it was wonderful. It was really a wonderful party. Everyone enjoyed it. Now, this coming, we want to thank the community for the support on this, definitely. This Friday, we have our monthly meeting. We usually have our meeting at Trinity Church, 315 Main Street, at 8 o'clock. This meeting is not specifically, and I want to make it clear, only for the Hispanic community. Whoever wants to come to the meeting, we've had, you've been at the meeting, and we have a lot of people. We also want to thank, before I forget, the Chronicle for all the support. The Chronicle's been there, supporting us. I do want to thank you in public. So this Friday, we have an open meeting at 8 o'clock. But most important, I know Susan has a big event coming, Health Fair. But you know, when we started, this was one of the things that we wanted to do. We have a Health Fair on Sunday. It's not going to be as big as what you have, Susan, but it's for the community, for the local community. And we are, we are doing it in conjunction, together with the Health Department of West Orange. We have Rutgers University of America School is going to be here. We have University Hospital. Everyone knows, I work with hospitals as a food service director for Alaris Health. So Alaris is going to be here. We're going to have a lot of hospitals. And we're going to be offering medical exams, different kind, to the community. We won't be asking questions or anything. We're just trying to help. Especially, there's a lot of people in this part of town, they don't have insurance and all that. And, you know, probably they don't have the possibility of going to a hospital and all that. And we're trying to bring it to them. And as part of the foundation goals, this is one of them. So we definitely asking for the support of everyone, whoever has connections with seniors, or whoever wants to be here. So the fair, Health Fair is going to be right here in the back. Dr. Natalie used to do it for Town Hall in the past, so she knows the procedure very well. And it's going to be this Sunday from 9 to 1. It's not going to be a big Health Fair, but we are going to cover the community. So thank you very much, Mr. Council President. Thank you, everybody, for the opportunity.
So Rodolfo, since this is your first event, and this is my first event, next year, we join forces and.
No, we're definitely going to be there, and we want our foundation to be a part of, because I know it's about us, and we have all the information of what you have.
Excellent.
And thank you for inviting us the other day to the Chambers of Commerce. It was very nice. So thank you, everybody, again.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Amalia.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we'll now open the council meeting to public comment. Please raise your hand, anyone wishing to address the town council. Yes, Ms. Anderson, our Director of Public Information. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, all. Just want to get to my notes here. Couple of things I do know off the top of my head. The West Orange Police Department Community Service Unit is holding a food drive. It is ongoing, and non-perishable goods can be donated to the main police station, as well as the 549 Valley Road substation, 92 Washington, and also ShopRite, I believe. So those are the locations. We also have the 39th Old Timers' Day coming up, and that's on September the 12th at Colgate Park. And the 12th Annual OSPEC Jazz Festival is on September 19. Councilwoman McCartney has already mentioned the Health Fair, and Megan Brill's already talked about the 5K Run. So we've got a lot going on. I know we have the Run on the 20th, and again, on the 27th. So for those who are participating in both, it's a lot of running. Coming out, there's some great activities. The summer's not quite over for us. We're trying to squeeze in as much as we can, a lot of activity. So please join us. And also remember, school's in, so slow down. No passing school buses. Drive safely. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Yes, Mr. Marwitz.
Hi, Mark Marwitz, 19 Howell Drive. She's not here, but I wanted to thank Mrs. Spango for the service that she gave to the town. And I really, I'm going to miss her because she, Mrs. Spango's the only one who has ever said from, from the council, that, a couple of times, she said, "I agree with Mark Marwitz, sir." And I would just be floored, because I don't expect that from, but listening to the conversation tonight about the procedure for finding a replacement councilperson, there, I scribbled down a few notes. There really are a lot of good people in West Orange. And if I were on the council, I would be more proactive than just waiting for resumes to come in, because resumes to come in could be from the political types. But there are a lot more people who, who would be very, very qualified, but may not feel that they have the, whatever it is, to send a resume in. So what I would, you know, like to do, if I could make a suggestion, is find people who have come out to, let's say, town council meetings. Specifically, I was thinking people who spoke on, for either side, not my side or against, or your side, but for the downtown redevelopment issues. There must have been 30 or 40 or 50 good, intelligent, articulate, they don't have to be that articulate, but good people who care about the town, and who are very bright, and who aren't politically, you know, always watching, but would make, find councilpeople and maybe reach out to them. You know, I'm not saying they have to be from my side, or, because there were very impressive people who spoke against what I felt or feel. So I, you know, as a councilperson, you may want to look at a broader pool of candidates than just to, you know, just send resumes. Also, I know, I don't know where you live, but there's, there's no one from the 4th Ward on the council, as far as I know. And I think that, that part, oh, you are, Mr. Cirillo, okay.
4-1.
4-1, okay. So I take that back. I guess we are represented.
You meant the second hill.
Okay.
It's a big voting board.
The second hill.
The second hill, that's it. And I would like, I mean, I would think that we would want to find people who, candidates who have come to town council meeting from time to time, you know, not just show up and say, you know, "I want to start at the top," and, you know, but they've shown interest in the township events, township affairs. So, you know, I would suggest you, you know, look at a broad pool of people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Lundrick, 234 Eagle Rock Avenue. I would like to address two issues from the last council meeting four weeks ago. At that meeting, I had referred to the previous meeting, during which Councilman Krkowiak had asked questions about the partnership between Prism and Dune. He was repeatedly interrupted and finally silenced by the council president, who indicated that the councilman was being accusatory. The council president noted that he did not feel that he owed the councilman an apology. Contrast that with the treatment of Mr. Cohen from Prism at the last meeting, who essentially called us, the members of the public, liars. We had made many a factual statement regarding Prism's track record with regard to the redevelopment project. Mr. Cohen also used language that was, at best, less than professional, and at worst, offensive. Yet the council president seemed to only mildly object, and did not ask him to elaborate on the accusatory statements he made about us with reference to the facts that we presented. I'm puzzled by the different treatment given to the councilman, who is doing his job, and Mr. Cohen, who accused us of lying and who acted unprofessionally. My next question is about priorities. At the last meeting, the mayor said that he would like to put a sign in the Pleasantale section of town, designating the area as Pleasantale. He also indicated that it is possible that similar signs would follow for other sections of the township. The cost of one sign was said to be $18,000 to $20,000. If signs are placed in three other areas, the cost would come to about $72,000 to $80,000. It was stated some time ago that the cost of upgrading the sound system here in this room, where members of the public have a right to hear what their elected officials discuss, would be $15,000. And I think a decision was made not to upgrade the sound system here. So why would signs designating certain areas of the township, which might be characterized as nice but unnecessary, take priority over a better sound system in this public meeting room, which can be characterized as essential for a democratic government to function properly? Thank you.
Ms. Morelli. Mrs. Morelli. I was calling on Mrs. Morelli.
Rosary Morelli, Ralph Road. Mark, I come to all the meetings. I better, have a better chance of getting struck by lightning than being appointed to this board. Tonight, I'm going to talk about parliamentary procedures and senior issues, if there's more time, more other issues. At the last council meeting, Councilman Krkowiak revealed that for more years than anyone was able to recall, the council meetings were not conducted in total compliance with Chapter 3 of the Rules of the Council. The discussion focused on the fact that the rules apply and must be complied with, and the laws can be changed if desired. I've spoken at numerous meetings with different members presiding, that parliamentary procedure wasn't being complied with, yet president after president continued to ignore the admonition. Mr. Guarino, I have a copy here for you. I don't know if you've ever seen it, Chapter 3, the Rules of Council. Do you want me to set down? If you turn to 3-16 decorum, 3-16.1, it's on page 5. Each member of the Township Council shall cooperate with the chair in preserving order and decorum. And no member shall by conversation or otherwise delay or interrupt the proceedings of the council, nor disturb any member while speaking, or fail to abide by the orders of the council or its president, except as specifically permitted in these rules. I strongly recommend that you, and I suggest, you keep these by your side, and Robert's Rules of Orders, when you run the meetings. Okay. I would have to assume either you're unacquainted with the rules by allowing certain persons to attack and interrupt Mr. Krkowiak, and I think Sue covered it very well. Now on the senior issues, I've come before this body several times to discuss the problems the seniors are having with transportation to doctors and medical facilities. The process of making arrangements alone has become an exercise in futility for the seniors, and seniors on a daily basis are hour after hour on the phone with Social Security, Medicare, or pad offices, in addition to attempting to set up transportation with the township, the county, or access link. It appears from what I've heard from one senior that the township doesn't have any drivers, yet they have a dispatcher. I emailed the mayor last week regarding a specific problem one senior told me about, and I haven't heard back from him yet. Now, without being repetitive, I've come to council meetings on a regular basis to present you all the facts, the results of my research, recommendations, the counties offered to help, and my offers to help. To date, you've all brushed me off and done nothing to help. It's either because I'm the advocate, and it's a personal issue, or seniors aren't your priority. Many of them are angered with the fact their jitneys transporting residents to other towns for trains to New York City and their Wall Street jobs for free. Yet if no transportation is available for them, they'll have to use private taxi service and pay for it. Mr. Guarino, you really worked very actively to get these jitneys going, and you succeeded. It would be a nice thing to do for the seniors. They really, really need it. It's my opinion, the behavior of this council, the mayor, and the administration is insensitive and disgraceful. You're ignoring and punishing one of the most vulnerable group of citizens. I have another issue I want to address. You're the liaison, Mr. Guarino, you're the liaison of the Downtown Alliance. I'm asking you to provide the citizens with a documented statement from the state agency that oversees the town's alliance, whether the farmer's market is allowed to incorporate a flea market in the farmer's market. This issue came up at the county, they come on site and give out vouchers for food grown in the state to needy seniors. I'd like to see what the official ruling is as to whether it's either a flea market or a farmer's market. Thank you.
Ms. Morelli. Yes, who's next, please? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Dr. Calvani, currently on Burke Street. I just had a couple of quick questions. One was in reference to the vacant council position, and that is that we came with the process, but there, as you mentioned, there's a number of people who've already submitted applications. So what is your plan to do with those? Do they need, are you suggesting now that they need to resubmit, or if they've already been received, are you maintaining those lists?
We're all saying different things. I'm saying yes, you're saying no. They have to resubmit.
It has to be resubmitted in person.
In person.
In person, not through email.
Okay.
Because you're, one of the things you have to do is you have to fill out a background check file and pay for that.
So for those who've already done a background check and paid for that, is there required for a second one at this point in time?
Yes. Every new election, absolutely, yes.
Okay. So, okay, good, so that's good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Mr. Paglisi.
I stole your thunder. I didn't think about that.
What great news that we have.
Save some press. I'm so sorry.
What great news that we have from the county?
Anthony Paglisi, representing County Executive Joe DiVincenzo this evening. Just have several events, I know West Orange is a busy place. Essex County makes it an even busier place. As way back when the meeting started, Councilman Krokowiac did mention our September 11 ceremony, which is Eagle Rock Reservation at 8:00 a.m. September 13th, at South Mountain Reservation, corner of Cherry Lane and Northfield Avenue, is the Blues Festival, that's from 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Then September 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., is our annual Senior Wellness Day at Cody Arena. October 3rd is Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day, from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at our Fairview Avenue site in Cedar Grove. And then at that same Fairview Avenue site on Saturday, October 17th, from 9:00 to 3:00, is our Computer and Electronics Recycling Day. All this information is on our website, which is essexcountynj.org. I also want to reference back to what Councilwoman McCartney had mentioned at your planning board or zoning board meeting with the pony trail. This morning, we had a press conference at the zoo where we announced that, or had a groundbreaking for a new zoo cafe. So we really appreciate all the help that West Orange has given us, through demolition permits, construction permits. The zoo cafe was greatly needed because this year, we're anticipated to attract over 700,000 visitors, and the facility we had there was not sufficient, although, you know, it was kind of like a trademark place, and we did get a lot of Facebook comments about how much people were going to miss it. But the new facility is on track to be opened in the spring, and of course, you'll all be invited to attend the grand opening.
Thank you. When are the giraffes coming?
The giraffes are also in the spring, and construction on that project is progressing very quickly.
Thank you. Anthony, just a quick question. Does the county have, is it readily available, the stats for visitors at the zoo and to use the facility, not only the zoo, but the arena, the skating arena?
What kind of stats do you need?
Like, you know, number of people going, the times they're going, you know?
I don't know if we would be able to break it down by the times, but I could definitely get you a breakdown of the number of people. It might be easier, the times people go to the arena may be easier to track than the times people come to the zoo. I can check that out and see how detailed we keep those numbers.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anthony, I have a question for you. You just heard the comments about the senior transportation. Do you have any updates or anything that you can share with the county on senior transportation?
I know Ms. Morelli has met with our senior services department, I've talked with our senior services director. We're ready to help in any way that you guys want. We run our bus service, we have our, it's through a vendor, but it's closely monitored by our office. We do service a lot of West Orange residents. However way we can improve service or enhance service, we're ready to serve. And I've also talked with Mr. Sayers about that as well, so. If it's just a button that we have to push to get everything started, I mean, we're ready.
Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Seeing none, yes, sir?
Hi, I'm sorry, I just, I'm here.
Please come to the podium, sir, and state your name and address. Thank you for coming tonight.
Yeah, my name is Willis Drummond. I live at 1 Westwood Drive North, West Orange. It's my first time ever coming to a meeting.
Speaking to the microphone, sir.
Anyway.
Could I just, please forgive me for interrupting you.
Yes.
I know why you're here. You're actually here, I believe, to discuss one of the ordinances that are on the agenda for second and final reading.
I don't think so. I think he's here to talk about water in his backyard.
Okay. My mistake. I apologize. I am familiar with, I got you confused, I apologize.
That's okay, that's fine. I think you've gotten some of my emails.
Oh, yes.
About the water problem in my yard, and in my neighbor's yard, and my neighbor's yard on the other side, and I'm just, I just am really kind of frustrated with not being able to know what's going on, where the water's coming from, why it's all of a sudden in my yard, it's now turning, there's algae in my backyard, there's algae on the side of my house, and this water, this pooling, and I just, the New Jersey American Water has been to my property three different times, and they've checked the water mains, they've checked the sewage lines, and I've been in touch with Mr. Lepore, and he's been back and forth trying to get to the bottom of it, and so I'm just, I just wanted to bring it up in front of the town, so that my voice can be heard a little bit louder, so that everyone's aware of it, and, I mean, I've lived in West Orange since 1992, and I've never had this problem before, and I don't know where it's, where the water is coming from, and why it has managed to end up on my property for the last year and a half. And it has nothing to do with rainfall, it hasn't rained in West Orange here for at least two or three weeks, and the side of my house and my, a portion of my backyard is basically soaked. My neighbor at 3 Westwood Drive North, Valerie Bell, has the same problem in her backyard, and I just talked to the neighbor at 5 Westwood Drive North, who said he had a problem up until, beginning in 2006. And I went into his yard for the first time and saw that behind his property, there's like a trench, and water is just steadily flowing, and it seems to be coming from up past his property, from somewhere up on Lorelei Road, which is the road that runs parallel to Westwood Drive North. So I'm just trying to find out where this is coming from, what someone can do to stop it, because it doesn't come from my property, it just, it's on my property from somewhere else, and it's, the foundation of my basement is constantly wet, and last year, I had to put a French drain and a sump pump in, because it was coming through the walls of my basement, and having nothing to do with snow or the water table from rain or snow, just, it just, it had, you know, water goes where it has to go. And so I'm just, I just wanted to bring that up, and hopefully, someone can address it. I've been in touch with Mr. Lepore, and he's been, been to my house a couple of times, and so he's aware of it, and he's, he's been, you know, telling me that he's working on it, trying to figure out what the situation is, but it's just getting a little bit to the point now where I'm starting to get worried that this may escalate into a more serious problem than what it is right now, because I've had contractors at my house, and they said, having water, having your foundation wet constantly is no good. And I'm not rich, and I can't afford to move, or, you know, my house sinking to the ground. So, anyway, that's my situation, and I just wanted to bring that up.
No. Thank you, sir. Thank you for bringing, we'll talk to Mr. Lepore too, to get some more detailed information.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Township Council? Okay. Seeing none, I close public comment, and I open the floor to my council colleagues. Councilwoman McCartney.
I'm sorry that Mr. Drummond came out, we did receive your emails, and I did speak to Lenny Lepore, Mr. Lepore engineer, about that. I understand even the Health Department has been out there to investigate, and that New Jersey American Water, also, I don't, I guess they don't have results back from American Water. I know that they have a sound system, that they can listen to hear if there was a water main break, or some kind of break, to determine what that is, so apparently, that's still under investigation. I'm also wondering if there was a way to look at permits that had been pulled in the area, if someone in a certain radius did work, and could that have affected something on your property? I don't know, right? You're sitting two seats over from Mr. Lepore. Yeah. Just continue to investigate. Yeah. Let me see, yes. Rosary, with the transportation issue, that's something, you're accusing us of not doing anything, but, you know, that has already been brought to the administrations, I guess, like Anthony said, push a button, they're ready to go. Jack, can you address where we are with the transportation issue?
The big issue, Councilwoman, is people want to be taken outside of the township, and it's almost impossible for us to do that. I've had conversations with Anthony Paglisi, the county does do that, but there's a registration process where people have to register with the county in order to use their system, and some people have not done that. I've had these conversations with Mrs. Morelli. We do go out of town to take people for dialysis treatments, only to South Orange, actually on South Orange Avenue. And we do that not only during the week, but we do that on holidays, or whenever they need those treatments. It's a tough, it's a tough question, because, as I said, Essex County does provide transportation for out-of-town, for people to go out of town. There's also another company called Access Link, which provides transportation. They're not easy to get into, and to get yourself on their list, to get done what you need to get done. Anthony and I have talked about this, I don't know how we make the process easier, people just have to call the county and register with the county in order to get transportation.
Right. And even Access Link, I'm familiar with that agency, they have parameters, and there's certain time that you have to call ahead of time, and you have to wait afterwards, but you can call and register with them.
That's correct. That's correct.
I guess, and Mark, let the record reflect that I do agree with you on this particular issue about council candidates. It's an open field, and you're right, we do have quite a few talented, intelligent people in town, and we welcome people to step up. Susan, I don't have an answer on the signs.
Councilman Cirillo.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Drummond, I'm sure that, having Mr. Lepore help you, is, he's like the best advocate. I mean, he'll go above and beyond, so you got the best person working alongside to try to address that issue. Mr. BA, we also have the, you know, we're on the insurance committee, there's possibly an insurance claim for any losses. I know that doesn't alleviate anything, but it is a possibility, right?
The issue is, is we're trying to figure out where the water's coming.
Sure.
And as Councilwoman McCartney had said, we've had the Health Department out there, Mr. Lepore's been out there numerous times, we've had New Jersey American Water, and for some reason, we just cannot figure out how the water's coming into those properties. But we're not going to stop checking it and trying to figure out how to do it. We just haven't figured it out yet.
Steep slope, right?
It's coming from above, there's no doubt about that. The question is, where, I mean, it could be an underwater spring somewhere.
That's what I was thinking, right?
It could possibly be a spring on someone else's property. However, we have not been able to figure that out yet.
But I'm glad that Mr. Lepore's looking at it, and will be proactive. And there were some points about the quorum at the meeting, we have, thank you for sharing that information with us, it's a great guide. You're right, that without Robert's Rules, we would probably have chaos, so I'm glad that we have guidance. And I know there was a resident that talked about the, you know, the way the speakers address the public, or us, or the interaction between the council members. We try our best, you know, democratic process is not perfect, but we try to keep our emotions and our positions when discussing policy as best as we can in line with Robert's Rules and a respectful engagement, at least, you know, I think we all do. At the end of the meetings, I know that we don't, a lot of the members of the public don't stay there, but, you know, we're all very cordial with each other, and it's just, you know, part of making policy. There's a lot of hard feelings exchanged at times. But thank you to all the speakers that came up, it's a lot of good points, a lot of good issues. Mr. Meyerowitz, I always respect your position, your position and what you present before us, it's never taken lightly, so I do agree at times as well. I do want to wish Councilwoman Spango well, in her new position, I'm happy for her, she's excited. Today was her first day of work, she was telling me all about it, her new office, and we're going to miss her. Patty represented an interesting demographic here, born and raised in the town, and decided to purchase a home in West Orange, in the town that she grew up in, a business owner. So she had a certain perspective that I respected here up on the council, and I'll miss that, so I want to wish her well. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Krokowiac.
Yes, thank you. Just wanted to follow up on Mr. Drummond's coming here tonight. I know this has been, obviously, a very difficult period of months for you, and I know Mr. Lepore has been paying attention to this, and there seems to be some issue about finding it. I know Mr. Lepore is in the back of the room, and I know Mr. Sayers indicated a substantial familiarity with this. What's the sort of timetable that Mr. Drummond can expect? I join him in being concerned about having that water that's there for month after month. I know we've, we've had that once or twice since I've been on the council, where you just can't figure out, and the road is splitting, but what's the timetable?
I can't give you a timetable. We can't find where the water's coming from, but we're not going to stop looking for it, that's the issue. We've had American, New Jersey American Water up there, I think on more than one occasion. Lenny, if you want to speak on this. And they have basically said they, it has nothing to do with any of their systems, as Mr. Drummond said. I can't, I don't know if they're telling me the truth or not, obviously, they must be, I would assume, you know, unless I start digging up the ground up there, and obviously, we can't do that, because it's private property. All the other properties are private properties, so we can't go on there and start digging up private properties.
Good evening, Mr. Lepore.
Good evening.
Can you shed some light, sir?
Well, I don't want to say we don't know the source of it, I'm not saying we know exactly what's creating it, but certainly, we know where it's emanating from the ground, and how it's flowing through some of the properties that are on Lorelei Road. I think probably a number of years ago, it probably kept flowing down Lorelei Road to Caroline Avenue, and somewhere, maybe in the past few years, some changes on some of those properties on Lorelei has, the road has kicked the water into the rear yards of some of the homes on Westwood Drive North. So I think part of, that's probably why Mr. Drummond, only up until a few years ago, never really saw the water, and even to this day, it ebbs and flows. I was at Mr. Drummond's house a couple of weeks ago, and I don't want to say his yard was bone dry, but it wasn't holding water, wasn't any setting water. The next day, he called me, sent me some pictures, lo and behold, there's water in his yard, hadn't rained in days. As Jack said, it could be a spring. As Jack said, it could be a spring, could be a leaking water main. There's both distribution and transmission mains by New Jersey American in Laurel Ly Road. I'm not sure if we'll ever pinpoint the source, but I think certainly that once we eliminate that it's not water company, that this is something naturally occurring, then at least we can try to pick it up as close or near the source as possible and then try and direct it away from anybody's home. But that's going to require us to go on private property, extend storm sewer onto a private property and collect the water.
Okay.
Mr. Laporte, is there any interim solution? This is the first I'd heard, that there's a third home that had this up until 2006 and it sounds like they have a trench in their yard now. Is that something that?
A few weeks ago, Mike Fonzino and I from the, Mike from the health department went up and talked to, I think the homeowner is at number 38 Laurel Ly, where that seems to be the source of it emanating from a rock outcropping. There's a lot of rock in that area. If you go, for example, to the top of Shelley Terrace, one block to the north or one street to the north, you'll see a big rock outcropping, so it could be spring water. On the other hand, if there was a leak in the water system, not necessarily a big leak, this isn't a gusher, it can find its way through the rock and emanate in the same, or a similar location or same location as a spring could. What I think is happening is, like I said, it used to just go down and stay away from the people on Westwood Drive North. The gentleman who does own number 38 Laurel Ly Road has been there, I think, close to 35 years, has said when he moved in, he didn't have this problem, maybe about a dozen years later it started. He's, if you saw his yard, it's rather unique. He incorporated this water flow into his rear yard, flows into a neighbor's yard where they dug a ditch, then it just doesn't keep going on the ditch. It then kicks over, gets diverted to Westwood Drive North. So, it's, it's just a fairly steady flow, not like I said, rapid flow, a gusher. When it gets down to Mr. Drummond's house, his lot's a little flatter, it tends to lay there. If you see his neighbor, you, house at number three, you can see despite all the drought of the summer, they have some of the greenest backyard in town.
Is there an interim solution to this or you just?
I don't really think there's an interim. I think, I want to make sure that it's not coming from New Jersey American Water. I've had history with them where I don't always feel the most comfortable that, that they will find a leak. I'm not saying they're trying to hide it, I'm just saying they just don't always seem to be so, so reliable in identifying. And when it can come from a distance and travel through rock, I think it gets even harder for them to locate. So, I think if we're convinced or at least that they've made their best effort, I think then we can talk to some of the residents on the street and see how to actually collect the water so it's a minimal problem for, for everybody. Some people may want to still have it flowing through their yard, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I wanted to just follow up with Mr. Searis about this sister's issue with the transportation, because I know Ms. Morelli has been coming here, meeting after meeting, talking about various aspects of this. I wasn't clear on this. I thought Ms. Morelli was talking about residents who wanted to be moved within the township that she said were having problems. Is that not the case?
No, not the case. They want to move out, they want to go outside the township.
Okay.
We have no problems moving people within the township.
Okay.
We run three buses a day.
Okay. Just, thank you, Mr. Marowitz, for your comments. Ms. Lencheck, thanks for your comments as well. I, I, I wanted to follow up on this because just to, if people weren't aware of this, at the July 21st meeting, we were having a discussion about redevelopment and I was trying to find out from the attorney who represents us in the redevelopment project downtown, why it is that the council wasn't asked to review or approve some significant document, changes to significant documents that was made last year that sort of came up because we had new documents that we were considering at the July 21st meeting. And council president interrupted me to say some, what I thought were, you know, very unfortunate things, starting with totally unprofessional and going downhill from there and I'm not going to repeat them. And I think, I'm thinking it's just a matter of emotions were high, but it's, it's quite unfortunate, it seems to happen a lot to me, perhaps I talk too much or go on at length. But I certainly do hope that it doesn't, it doesn't recur. And I wanted to just sort of focus the issue on totally unprofessional. I think Ms. Lencheck talked about how Mr. Cohen, who is one of the partners in prison, came up and at the podium, before he did, both council president and I were trying to get from Ms. Credidio whether Prism was going to be the general contractor in the construction of the project in the new redevelopment entity. And all four times we asked, we didn't get an answer that we expected because we thought they were the general contractor. I find that pretty unprofessional because Mr. Cohen came up and first he, he used an obscenity at the podium that everybody could hear. Then, as Ms. Lencheck pointed out, he basically accused a lot of the people that had spoken, a lot of the residents had spoken of, of not telling the truth. And then he said Prism is the general contractor. And I thought both of those instances were unprofessional, but maybe we don't even need to use the word unprofessional. Maybe if we just stick with the facts as opposed to trying to characterize people's motives and trying to describe the behavior, if we just stick to the facts and argue the facts as, as Councilman Cirilla was saying, I think we'll be much, much better off. I agree with Ms. Lencheck about these, these signs. I don't, again, it's a, it's a sign that's going to be going in the Lucoil property at the intersection of Eagle Rock Avenue and, and Pleasant Valley Way. The mayor had come and said that the, the cost of the sign was about $18,000 to $20,000 and it basically says Pleasantale. And my argument was that I don't think we could, I don't think it was a good use of money because 99.9% of the people that see that sign, once it goes up, I don't think it's up quite yet, either already know that that's the Pleasantale section or they don't care. And I just, I, I, I agree with you. I think it was much more important to try to fix the sound system in here than, than put these signs up and I hope that we don't have, I don't, I hope the council is not asked to approve any more of these signs. Ms. Morelli, I appreciate you coming up with, with Article 3 of our town ordinances. You're exactly right and, and I, I feel like the, our other council members do understand these issues and the issues of our conduct, but it's just sometimes emotion gets the best of us and I appreciate the reminder. There's another section in that, that basically says that no member should be interrupted at any point and that the council president only gets to decide what order people speak, but cannot prevent them from speaking. So, I sincerely hope that I get interrupted less going forward. And I, I, I do attend the, the farmer's market and got some great tomatoes last Friday and I have noticed that there are non-food related vendors there. I can't imagine that that's a problem with the state, but maybe by the time the next meeting comes around, council president, maybe you can just sort of clarify that for us. And Mr. Drummond, again, I appreciate you coming and I'm sorry you're having so much trouble and it sounds like it's a pretty high priority for the administration, so please keep us informed of what's going on going forward. Thank you, Council President.
Welcome. Mark, I agree with you. I agree with you, you know, and it is democratic process and we hope, Mark, even like you said, people who've come and didn't, but if you're really sincere about wanting to participate on this township council, then you should take the time to do your cover letter, do your resume and come in. But I agree with you, it's the democratic way and anybody who wants to has that opportunity to do it and I hope, and I hope they exercise that right. Ms. Morelli, great, and I love the four words on here, which really means something. Professional, being professional works both ways and that's true. It has to. And everybody has to treat everybody here professionally and equally and, you know, and that's what we will do. Yes, emotions sometimes do get the best of us, but you know what? Sometimes you've got to hold your emotions and check. And so, this is good. And it's, it's the four great words, both, it works both ways. Mr. Drummond, I'm, like everyone has said, we, I'm sure Mr. Laporte will, you know, do his diligence and will do the best we can and it is a high priority, as Councilman Kukrovjak said. So, we hope we get to the bottom of it and it'll, it'll work out. Also too, just like the general public to know, and the Chronicle did a retraction on it, a couple of meetings ago, it was mentioned that Dune, remember, it's not Prism, it's Dune, is giving a tax abatement. They're not getting a tax abatement, they're paying pilot. There's a difference between tax abatement and pilot. So, pilot is where the developer, redeveloper is paying. Tax abatement is where redeveloper, developer is paying nothing. So, it's just a wording. They're not getting a tax abatement. So, I just wanted to make that, to make that clear. Other than that, I thank everyone that came up tonight to speak. I hope we've given your answers. Always feel free to come up and speak your mind because that's the democratic process. You have a right, that's why we're here. You can be critical, you can be, you know, congratulatory, we look for positives, look for negatives, so, thank you. On that note, Madam Clerk, we'll continue with the consent agenda.
Council President, can I just clarify a question because I thought that what we have voted on for the redeveloper is both a tax abatement and payment in lieu of taxes.
No, correct me, Mr. Searis, correct me.
It's a 30-year tax abatement that.
It's a payment in lieu of taxes.
True.
Right, it's a payment.
Pilot, it's a pilot program.
Right, there's no tax abatement?
No, it's a pilot program.
Right.
It's a pilot program, not a tax abatement. They're two different things.
So, so they're not paying property taxes for as long as 30 years?
They're going to pay property taxes, but they're paying them at a different rate. That's what a pilot program does.
So, even though, even though they are not required to pay the property taxes that they normally would be, you, you're saying it's inaccurate to call it a tax abatement?
I'm just saying that a tax abatement and a pilot program are two different things. A pilot program is something that's, that's usually given during a redevelopment project when if in fact, you're in a, you're in an, an underdeveloped, when in fact, you're in an underdeveloped area. When you're in an underdeveloped area, it's an incentive for people to come in and spend their money in order to redevelop that area. And the issue with, with this project is, is A, we're getting more taxes right now than we were getting when that building was filled. And whether you're getting a tax abate, whether you're getting a pilot program or you're not getting a pilot program, it's still going to increase the tax revenue coming into the township for that property. It's not going to put it at the rate that everybody else is at, but it's still increasing the tax revenue coming into the township. And then, and it's the incentive for the developer to come in and develop the property.
Right, and, and I understand that to be the case as well, but my understanding of the law says that the governing body has to provide a tax abatement in order to then allow a pilot to be put in place, payment in lieu of taxes. So, I, I just, I, I don't want to belabor the point, but my understanding is that there is a tax abatement and there has to be a tax abatement first in order to have the pilot put in place. And I'm not disagreeing with anything else you're saying, but I'm, I'm just saying I think we have both of those here and if that's, if that's not the case, then I need to do further research.
I think as a general, a general understanding of a tax abatement is, is that there are no taxes. And there are circumstances where a tax abatement is given where there are no taxes being paid. In this particular situation, the property owner is paying taxes on the land itself. Those taxes continue. As far as the improvements are concerned, there is a graduated period of time for them to get from a minimum to paying tax, the taxes on the improvement. So, this is, usually, again, when people talk about abatements, it's usually like, you know, they're not paying taxes. That's not the case here. So, this is, this is, it's a nuance, you know, but, but I think it's an important one because I think the public generally, when they hear tax abatement, believe that there's no taxes being paid or, or, or there are, there are those that believe that. And so, by, by speaking in terms of the payment in lieu of taxes for the improvement itself and then they do pay taxes on the land, I think that's a, that is a more accurate description.
Right, and I'm, again, I'm not disagreeing with you, but legally speaking, legally speaking, the governing body granted them a tax abatement and then, once that tax abatement is in place, then it has the pilot. Is that not correct?
It doesn't matter. I don't think that the sequencing that you're, that you're, that you're articulating is, is the way this was set up, but.
Councilwoman McCartney.
With the payment in lieu of taxes, the structure is different than our property tax bill with the redevelopment project. 95% of those payment in lieu of taxes come back to the municipality, 5% goes to the county as opposed to our tax bill where 62% goes to the school board, 26% comes to town and the remainder goes to the county. So, that was payment in lieu of taxes and our, the financial agreement was set up where we were to receive 1.3 million each year and it is tiered after so many years, it is increased over the life of that. So, they're still paying taxes.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's 1.3 million.
That's what was stated in the.
I don't think it's that much, I don't think it's that much. But anyway, we'll, we'll stop, waste some time. I'll come back at the next meeting and I'll.
But they are paying taxes. The point is, they are paying taxes.
Right, and I'm not saying, I'm not saying they're not, because you can clearly see payment in lieu of taxes.
Right.
Which if you just listen to that, it means that you're not paying taxes, you're payment, you're paying them in lieu of, meaning otherwise, other than.
You're paying taxes, but you're paying a lesser rate.
In lieu of your municipal.
I understand that.
You're not, it's not that you're not paying taxes, you're paying it at a lesser rate. Look, arguably, if you want to say that abatement means you're paying less taxes or you're paying no taxes, the definition, you could probably argue that, but that's not the way it functions in what we're doing here. That's, that's just not the, the way that it works.
And I specifically asked to put that definition in the agreement at that point because it kept saying tax abatement and that was not the case because they are paying this payment in lieu of taxes.
And one last thing and we don't want to belabor it, is that the developer is paying their full taxes until the project is completed and then pilot kicks in. Am I correct?
Well, actually, after the construction has ended, they have up to two additional years not to be paying anything. Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of previous meeting, August 11th, 2015, public meeting and executive session minutes.
Consent.
Consent.
Report of township officers, none. Reading of petitions and communications and bids, none. Bills, are there any questions on the bills?
Consent.
Consent.
Resolutions, are any resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilwoman McCartney.
Not to pull, but John, maybe you, we have so many resolutions on the tax sale program, the digital tax sale program, can you just talk about that, that we don't have to pull?
In 2014, we participated in the state's pilot program doing online taxes, tax sale. It was very successful for the township and this, we, these set of resolutions in order to participate in again this year are required. We, it is fully funded through fees that are charged to delinquent taxpayers and we, we recommend that you adopt all the resolutions.
Okay. Anything else, Councilwoman?
No, just a comment on Resolution 20, 231-15. This is the resolution authorizing the submission of the municipal alliance strategic plan for the fiscal year. This is to adopt addressing drug and alcohol abuse. What I would like to see, the municipality expand the prescription drug give back program that the police department has. I know it's going to be represented at the health fair. We do two prescription give backs, one in April and one in October. I've asked the police department to expand that so that it's not such, you're not storing old prescriptions, that they can come back. So, I do hope that they, they look at expanding that program. That's it, thank you.
Madam Clerk, I would like to pull Resolution 234-15. And that's all, that's all you.
Any other resolutions being pulled this evening?
Councilman Cirilla?
No.
Councilman Kukrovjak?
Yes, Council President, thank you. I'd like to pull agenda item I. I'd like to pull Agenda Item I, Resolution 230-15, Resolution to reappoint John O'Gross as Chief Financial Officer, and also Agenda Item N, Resolution 235-15, Resolution authorizing change order number one with Matrix New World Engineering. And I wanted to also ask a clarifying question on Resolutions 236, 237, and Ordinance on First Reading 2463-15, about the emergency funding for part of the expenses of cleaning up the library facade that fell down several months ago and moving forward. If I could, please.
One other question?
We'll be happy to answer any question.
Okay. This is going to be a little lengthy, but there are three pieces of legislation, and I'm confused on exactly what's, what the numbers are that we're actually voting on tonight. In Resolution 236, it says, this is to pay for part of the expenses of the facade failure. And the three resolutions, 236 says the expenses related to the renovation are $130,000, and that also describes the emergency appropriation. 230, Resolution 237-15 says the total amount of emergency appropriations is $136,500. It also notes expenses related to the down payment in connection with the bond ordinance is $6,500. So that's $6,500 more than what's listed in Resolution 236. And then in the, in the bond ordinance says the improvements cost $130,000, including the $6,500 down payment, and authorizes bonds to be issued of $123,500. So it's a ton of numbers, but I can't figure out exactly what we're voting on.
Well, they're two different animals. There is, there's two emergency appropriations, one for, that allows us to pay an outstanding bill, outstanding bill to the vendor that actually did the work on the facade. Mitigation. Make it safe. The other emergency appropriation is to fund a, sorry, is to fund the down payment for the bond ordinance. But the total appropriation, the $130,000, is going to, is the limit of the appropriation for the emergency. The amount of down payment is going to be the $6,000 and change, and the difference is the amount to be raised in, as a bond.
Okay, so in 236, the emergency appropriations, $130,000, right?
That's correct. That's just for, that's to, that's to pay for the.
Contract.
The contract.
Right.
The other emergency is to raise the down payment for the bond.
Okay, so the number in 236 is 130,000?
That's correct.
Okay. The number in 237 is 6,500?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, in the ordinance, it says, authorizing bonds to be issued of 123,500?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Add those together, they come to 130.
Okay.
There's your, there's your balance.
So this number in 237 that says 136,500, that really has no.
That's where you have to declare within the resolution, the amount of emergencies you've done during the year. It's a cumulative number, it's just a technical requirement.
And we've done no emergencies, and we're not going to do any emergencies.
We just did the two tonight.
Right, okay. Thank you, that's, that's all I needed.
Madam Clerk?
With the exception of Resolutions I, M, and N, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The consent agenda is implemented. Councilman Guarino, you pull, well, let's see, let's go in order. Resolution 230-15 was pulled by Councilman Krokoviac, Resolution to reappoint John O'Gross as Chief Financial Officer.
Yeah, this is, this is at the four-year anniversary, under, I believe, state law, if he's reappointed as Chief Financial Officer, he will be granted tenure, and it makes it a whole lot harder, if you want to get rid of him, for whatever reason. I don't, I don't want to say anything pejorative about that, but that's, do I understand that correctly?
Correct.
Okay. I just pulled it because I agree that Mr. Gross has done a lot of good things for, in his position for the township and for the administration and the council. But there are some things that, that have bothered me in the past, and I'm not ready to vote to approve this. So I just pulled it, not to discuss it, I don't want to discuss it, but just to be able to have a vote on it.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 230-15?
So moved. Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Abstain, please.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Resolution N 234-15, Resolution supporting the proposed NJ DOT replacement of a structurally deficient bridge deck on the eastbound I-280 entrance ramp from southbound Prospect Avenue along with the associated detours. Councilman Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. LaFleur, I need your input on this, and that's why I pulled it. This is a massive project, and it's going to have a massive impact on the traffic flow throughout the township. And knowing, not knowing here where it says what month or period it's going to start, and plus with the traffic study we're doing, it may have an impact on our traffic study. My first point is, why does it have to be done now? Why can't it wait till 2016? Is it, is the structure in imminent presence of deterioration and collapse?
If it was, they'd close it, so the answer to that is no. But they, they need to proceed. You're going to see them doing this work next year. It's not going to happen September, October. They may start to prep for the detours at the very end of the year, but I think you're going to see the majority of the work being done in 2016.
Okay. Were you part of the setup of the detours?
Yes.
Okay. And you did your analysis based upon, you know, where the traffic is now, what an impact will have on the neighborhoods, and?
Yes, certainly, there's going to be impact. One of the things we wanted to make sure was that, at least, the state would sign this or provide detours that didn't use municipal roadways. They're strictly using part of Route 280 West, parts of Route 280 East, keeping traffic on Prospect Avenue to Mount Pleasant Avenue, State Highway 10, to Pleasant Valley Way. That's somewhat counterintuitive, that everybody is going to detour to the west to go east.
Right.
That's how we wanted them to certainly sign it and encourage it. I think once it's implemented, I think motorists, as we all are motorists, will always try to find a better way or a path of least resistance, or one that has somewhat of a time advantage to them. That may mean motorists will continue to Route 10, and instead of turning west on Route 10, will go east down Mount Pleasant Avenue. If they find too many vehicles do that, some of those vehicles will take one of the other routes. It's a network, it's going to balance itself out over a few weeks, but the only way they're going to be able to rebuild the deck on this bridge is to close the ramp.
Is there any financial impact to the township? Will there be any, you know?
I don't believe so, as far as us providing any additional services in the way of police or other emergency services. I don't see that. I just think if there's a financial impact, it's one that's associated with inconvenience or perhaps delay.
Okay. But there'll also be the potential of motorists going through Essex Green and back the side road out to Route 10?
They could go down Rooney Circle to Marion Drive. That's, you know, hard to prevent that, or to not allow that or legislate it to, so that it's prohibited. You'll only put other businesses, I think, in jeopardy if you try to prevent people from making that movement.
Is there any way to put, maybe would you think of putting any speed controls in that, on that road? Any speed bumps, or even temporary? Just to, because you know people are going to come through, they're flying down.
It's possible we could do that on Marion Drive. Right now, one of the reasons we've, I haven't included Marion Drive as part of the repaving is to get through this project. I don't want to make it any smoother or faster.
That was going to be my question, too, with the access.
To travel, but that may be a possibility, then, to look at that if that presents to be a problem.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Councilman Krokoviac?
Yeah, just, I'm not sure, you tell me if you've explained to people exactly what they're going to have to do, because this is going to go on for several months. But basically, they're going to have to get on the interstate and turn around if they're, if they want to come from either direction across that bridge, correct? Only, only in the southbound direction, only if coming from Eagle Rock Avenue, and they want to go on Route 280 East. That, that bridge, that ramp, which actually flies over, goes over Prospect Avenue North, Prospect Avenue North goes under, that's the bridge that, that needs to be, the decking needs to be replaced. So it's not, if you're heading north on Prospect Avenue from Mount Pleasant Avenue or Northfield Avenue to get to Route 280, you will be able to, you won't have any restrictions on that or any detours. It's only in the southbound direction. And it's just the ramp? If you wanted to go, heading south, over the bridge, you'll still be able to do that? You can still head south on Prospect Avenue. Because when I first read that, I, I was freaking out at the number of people that would be affected, but this is, while still a substantial number of people, it's not as many as would be if you totally took the bridge out. It's only those who want access to 280. Either, again, it's going to be detoured to proceed to 280 West, to Pleasant Valley Way, back to 280 Route 280 East, or proceed to Route 10, to Pleasant Valley Way, to Route 10 East. They will, the state will be changing some of the signal timing at Pleasant Valley Way in those, on and exit, and entrance ramps, because there will be additional traffic using them. And when are we anticipating that this is going to take effect? Late this year into, again, maybe not full-blown construction, but I think you'll start to see some mobilization at the very end of the year, and then continuing through mid-2016. Hopefully, it'll, it'll go faster. Do you think, just throw it out to my council colleagues, do you think this is something we should get our public information officer to be aware of?
Yes, a very, a very good point.
Yeah, certainly, we will, it's just not quite, quite that time yet.
Right. Thank you, Mr. LaFleur. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 234-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Resolution 235-15, Resolution authorizing change order number one with Matrix New World Engineering, Inc., for the improvement of Mount Vernon Avenue and Roosevelt Avenue in the amount of $6,000. Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes, thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. LaFleur, just a couple of quick questions about this. Instead of me being a non-engineer describing this, maybe you could give the elevator explanation of the project itself? Okay. Mount Vernon Avenue is a dead-end street right off Pleasant Valley Way, just south of Interstate 280. It's on the westerly side of Pleasant Valley Way. What this additional services are, are for two things, because it went beyond the scope of the original proposal, and this was after meeting with a number of residents on the street. There is no easy place for a vehicle to turn around on Mount Vernon Avenue. They've been using some driveways at the, one or two of the, or two of the last homes at the top of the street. What this extra work does is, it provides for a turnaround on what would be the extension of Mount Vernon Avenue, that's town-owned property to the west of where Mount Vernon ends now. So it's a turnaround, it's in the form of a hammerhead type of arrangement where trucks can pull into that area, make K maneuvers, and then pull back down to the street. And this is going to be a great benefit to, to a couple of the residents that live at the very top. There is also complaints that, from the town-owned property, although, again, it's undeveloped, a lot of runoff comes off that property, just flows into, to the yards. What this extra work also did was looked at just designing a little bit more of an extension of the drainage system, diverting water through berms and drainage collection facilities to divert it down to Mount Vernon Avenue where it's collected in the storm drain, as opposed to running into people's yards. That's the nature of the work. Just two quick follow-up questions. Number one, just to confirm, as you know, I don't like, I don't think it's good practice to come to the council to approve expenditures when the work is already being done and we basically have to pay them. And I think that's a situation. That's, that's correct. So, that's fine, thank you. The second question I had is, we're going to be adding, according to this, almost 50% to the original cost of the design and the engineering work. And then that's going to cause the total cost of the project to go up about 20%, about another $50,000. I think it's, I'm just throwing out the estimates, to about a total of $250,000. Or, I think, I think from 250 to a little bit higher than that. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just reading the wrong note. My question is, does it make sense at this point, to, instead of just giving the, the design firm that we gave the original bid to, now they're charging us another 50% more, and then adding, I guess, I know they're not responsible for what, but the cost of the actual construction project, does it make sense to rebid this, or the, either, I guess, both projects, to see if we can get better? Well, I think, and that's why I stated what some of the numbers were that I had received. One, most of the work on the original project was done when I presented it to the residents, and these issues came up. So if we were to go out and rebid, then we'd, in essence, be saying, someone else just designed the project again, and that's going to cost more than, than what this incremental work did for, for this. Okay. So, so just to be clear, you've already done the design work, all of the designs were, including the additional design work? Is that correct? That's correct. Okay. Now, on the, so there's nothing we can do about that? Because we got to pay for it, and it doesn't make any sense to rebid it? Okay. But on the construction side, where do we stand in bidding the project and getting a contractor? Hopefully, by the end of this month, I'll have bids and be able to make a recommendation to the council. Okay, so, so the changes that we're recommending, that the new design firm is adding, are going to be incorporated in the bid specs? Yes. It won't be a situation where we're bidding the wrong project? Correct. Okay. Thank you, that's all I need.
Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 235-15?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Krokoviac?
No.
Councilwoman, who's that?
McCartney.
McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Ooh, a squeaker.
Here he comes. Too late.
I guess you can ask him for, ask him for a vote.
Councilman Cirillo, did you want to vote on 235-15?
Yes.
What's your vote?
Yes, you're voting.
Okay. Is that a squeaker?
Thank you.
It's two to one without you.
Madam Clerk?
Ordinances on second and final reading, Ordinance 2459-15, and Ordinance creating a reclassification and salary schedule of certain township of West Orange employees, setting forth their titles, classification, and salary ranges, and adopting a salary guide and establishing employee status as a township employee under the guidelines of the New Jersey Department of Personnel. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes. Is there any, oh, it's okay. Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance, on second and final reading, Ordinance number 2459-15? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open comment to my council colleagues. Counselwoman Cirillo?
The question of the supermajority, do we need a supermajority to approve this?
No.
Not an introduction.
Okay.
It's second.
This is second and final.
It's classification issues, it's not bond ordinance?
It's not bonds.
These are just, these are just regular ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Krokoviac, any comments?
No.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance 2459-15?
motion moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Krokoviac?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Guarino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2460-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.2, Restricted Parking Zones of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, Handicap Parking, 18 Dean Street and 46 Rigs Place. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinance, on second and final reading, ordinance number 2460-15?
This is for 18 Dean Street and 46 Rigs Place.
Right. Anyone wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close... Oh.
There is a resident here from 46 Rigs Place.
Okay.
If she wants to...
Absolutely.
Just for a moment.
No, please. Just state your name and address, ma'am, please, when you get to the podium. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Carrie Dinkin, at 46 Rigs Place, Apartment 1. And I really wanna thank you for considering my, my plea. It's really, really needed, and having a parking place for part of the week will immeasurably improve my life. So I wanna thank you all very much.
You're very welcome.
What was your last? What was your last name?
Dinkin. D-I-N-K-I-N.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dinkin. Is there anyone else in the general public wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close public comment, and I open the floor to my council colleagues.
No comment?
No comment? Okay. Seeing none. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2460-15?
Some.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance 2461-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-32.1, Handicap Parking on Streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange, 49 Harrison Avenue. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some. Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Is there anyone from the general public wishing to be heard on ordinances, on second and final reading, ordinance 2461-15?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address.
Sherry Kirk, 49 Harrison Avenue, Apartment 4.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm just gonna read it quick. Lived, lived there for over like 12 years at this point. It's been very, very, very rough trying to find a parking spot. There's been a big influx of new people, there's been parking nearly, makes parking nearly impossible. Now, I suffer bone-on-bone arthritis, I also have a bulge in my lower back. Any prolonged sitting causes me to have pain upon standing and walking. My orthopedist recommends total knee replacement, which I'm trying to put off as long as I possibly can. So everybody jockeying for spots in that area, and I just feel that if I can avoid all the extra unnecessary walking of trying to find a parking spot, I could be, it would be very beneficial in helping me to maintain the quality, quality of life I'm currently trying to keep without having to have the complete nurse, the knee surgery. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the general public wishing to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, I close public comment. I open the floor to my council colleagues. Any comments? Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2461-15?
Some moved.
Second. Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Ordinance...
We would've went out of order, I'm sorry. So we would've went out of order. We knew you were sitting here and could've done the ordinances first, so that you didn't have to sit here all evening.
This is my first time, I really enjoyed it.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Really?
Another note is my birthday, so I enjoyed cake, too.
Here you go.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Many more.
Submit your resume by next Wednesday.
Ordinance 2462-15, and ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 7, Traffic Subsection 7-10.1, Stopping or Standing, Stopping or Standing prohibited during certain hours on certain streets of the Revised General Ordinances of the Township of West Orange. Is there a motion to introduce on second and final reading?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.
Councilman Kukovia?
Yes.
Councilwoman McCartney?
Yes.
Council President Garino?
Yes.
Is there anyone here from the general public wishing to be heard on the ordinance on second and final reading, ordinance number 2462-15?
I agree.
Yes, ma'am. Welcome and good evening. When you get to the podium, just please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Frances Ferguson, and I'm a resident at 35 Mountain Drive. I wanted to just say that I really greatly appreciate the effort that Mr. LaPorte has made to put this in writing, and this is over a year in the making, so I wanted to not miss the meeting this evening. There have been some substantial upgrades to the street, and that has meant a lot more traffic on the street. My home is immediately adjacent to where there's been some home invasions recently. I live in a nice area, but it's been some, you know, sketchy parking, people parking in front of the house, all types of activity that's happening. So this is going to help address it quite a bit. There's no cul-de-sac at the end of the road, so my, I'm the last house on the road, and so my driveway is being broadly used, and so this will help with, with that substantially. So limiting the people from being able to park there certain hours of the evening will help, and certainly, I just think that restricting parking on certain sides of the street will also allow the police to be able to kind of come through. I'll take this opportunity to also say that I really, I've been a resident for over eight years, and I've not really had any issues. I really love my home, and the police have been very, very helpful. And so this is gonna make me feel a lot safer. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Len, there was other discussion?
Oh.
I know. Well, Len, there was other discussion on this particular ordinance. Is there something we need to do to this, or...
Well, this, everybody on the street was, was notified of this proposed regulation. Ms. Ferguson is the last house on the easterly side. As you can see, she is in support of prohibiting stopping or, and standing in front of her home. There's another aspect to this ordinance. If you're familiar with Mountain Drive, located off of Highwood Road, just Northfield Avenue, just west of Gregory Avenue, to Butts-Seton Hall property, that's all on the left-hand side of the road, the south and westerly side. I am proposing no stopping or standing along the entire length of that side. This road is only 24 feet wide. If you're to have parking on both sides, it'll be tough for vehicles to get through, and certainly very difficult, if not impossible, for emergency vehicles.
Right.
It's not a highly-traffic street. Rarely do you see cars parked on it, let alone even somebody trying to park on both sides, but I, I believed it was appropriate to make this part of the ordinance. I did get one complaint from Mr. Steve Hansen, or Professor Steve Hansen, at one Mountain Drive, that's the first house on the right, because the way this ordinance was written, he's near where the bends in the road are. It would effectively prohibit parking on all of his frontage. And I met with him, and he asked if there was any relief or consideration that could be given, and I told him I would look at it with the police department to see where we could possibly squeeze in some stalls, maybe at the beginning, near Highwood Road, and a little bit further around and away from the bend, so that his visitors didn't have to park down on Highwood Road, or in front of somebody else's house on, on Mountain Drive. So it's one section of that that I would ask you to reconsider. I know I spoke with Ken Kaser. Ken is of the opinion that perhaps the one thing to do is maybe defeat this and start it over again. So I think it's, it's up to you. If you don't wanna defeat it, I may make a suggestion to table it, because I'm not sure what's, what we're gonna exactly present back to you. And while I gave every indication to Professor Hansen that we will try to accommodate parking by his home, I would feel a bit embarrassed if I came back to you with the very same ordinance and said, no, after we looked at it with the police, we couldn't. That's not what I'm trying to do. So I, I think it's, it's your decision whether you wanna table it or defeat it.
Well, that's difficult, having a resident come out and say, you know, that they've been waiting a year to do that. But is there any way to move forward with this ordinance and do something for that particular...
Well, tonight, I, I couldn't, I wanna meet there with the police to, to best see where we can cite it. So I don't know if you want, if you can even extract something out of this. All, all we're gonna do is, if you, if you extract it, you're just going to allow the condition to exist that, that does now and has existed for, for decades.
Yeah. With allowing parking.
Which is allowing parking.
Right.
Not on both sides, just, I'm saying, if you, if you were able to pull a piece of it out.
No, that's materially different. No.
You have to adopt it early. Not an object for a vote, you have to hear it. If you decide you want a whole vote, then that's a vote.
I'd rather, I'd rather adopt it.
Obviously, those are three options.
And... I think we should just adopt it.
You can adopt it, obviously, and change it later.
Could always amend it if you find a different solution.
Right. We can amend it, right.
Okay. But if we adopt it, that means Professor Hansen won't have any on-street parking, or at least they'll, they'll get tickets.
Right. Well, I, I would, I would consider at least not posting it in his area until we get this resolved.
There you go.
There you go.
Yeah, I just, I just wouldn't want him to...
I, I don't either.
Yeah.
You know, if, if it's ultimately decided we can't do anything, you know, we can meet with him and let him know, but I think there's some things we can probably do.
Okay.
I was, I was part of the email thread today about this. He says that he basically doesn't have any on-property parking for visitors. Have you reviewed the property to, to see that that's the case? Because I know some, I've, I've lived near there, so I've, I've been up there, I've had friends, and some of them have parking behind their houses.
He, he's got a driveway on, on the side, as you come in off of Highwood Road. Not, not a very long driveway, maybe it's two cars wide, so I, I don't wanna say he doesn't have any, but maybe it's not necessarily the most convenient parking to use.
But Len, and if he is speaking about guests, or, you know, there are special placards that you can have if it's a special occasion, unless it, he means that there are that many cars in the house at one particular time. But I was also on that email stream, and it seems like it was really talking about guests. So isn't there, like, a special permit or placard that could be issued?
I, I would only consider that if we thought that we should, we, we're really gonna have a parking problem there. I, I, I've never known people to park in this area. I think they've used common sense and have said, gee, this doesn't feel like a good place to park, but this would absolutely prohibit it, and I think that was, was his concern. And, and I said we would look for places where we could see if we could squeeze in and allow it on, on, along his frontage without being a detriment to traffic. After all, they could do that now, and I'm not aware of there being accidents there. It's just not a highly-traffic street.
No, no.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 2462-15?
Some moved.
Second.
Councilman Cirillo?
Yes.